Okay, at six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item up on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, or want to switch anything around? Otherwise, I take a motion to approve it.
So moved.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick made the second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item up is the consent agenda. Any questions on that? Otherwise, I take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Rick made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And Bruce made the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item up in the agenda is recognizing retirees. And tonight, we're going to recognize Frank Bezek, who retired from the Utilities Commission. He worked in the water. He was a water operator. Retired actually January 7th of 2025, but we have a resolution for him. So this is resolution number 25-4-07-01, recognizing Frank Bezek. Whereas Frank Bezek has faithfully served the city of New Prague and the New Prague Utilities Commission in the position of water operator for the city of New Prague from August 2nd, 2000 to January 7th, 2025. Whereas he has always effectively, conscientiously, and professionally represented the city of New Prague and the New Prague Utilities Commission in a distinguished fashion. And whereas his efforts have been largely responsible for the excellent reputation, growth, and overall well-being of the city of New Prague and the New Prague Utilities Commission. And whereas all the citizens of the city of New Prague have been the beneficiary of his efforts, talents, and abilities for the past 24 years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of New Prague, Minnesota, that this community and city council express and record their esteem and high appreciation of this character dedication, or of his character dedication and contributions which have earned him the respect and friendship of all who have been, who have had the pleasure of working with him. And be it further resolved that the city council extend best wishes to Frank for many years of good health and happiness in his retirement. Adopted by the city council on this, of the city of New Prague on the 7th day of April, 2025. So, congratulations Frank. Come on up.
So Patrick's going to take up the floor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, I was a little boy when I was with the city. Congratulations.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is city engineer projects update. Is there anything? Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
All right, give me one second, just pulling it up. So the project update for the 2025 project, as you could see in that northeast corner. Last week, Michael's moved in and started doing some gas underground work. They should be doing main work all of this week and next week, and depending on the weather, move over to services. So Holtmeyer, the contractor for this year's street project, was in town today putting temporary water out. They'll have temporary water done today, tomorrow. And they will look at reclaiming Lincoln between Main and Second Street towards the end of the week and then start underground next week. So nice early start with the nice weather, even though they were planning on starting last week. But still, beginning of April is a good start for this year's project and hopefully good weather, better weather than last year. I'll move on to the testing. Unless you guys have some questions, I'll move on to the material testing.
No, I don't. Go ahead.
So we are looking for Chosen Valley Testing to get approved to do all the testing on this year's street project. Chosen Valley did the soil borings in the fall of 2024 for this project. They're the ones that have done the project the last three years. We've had good luck with them. Their quote for material testing, if you maybe noticed, is about $10,000 higher than last year. The main reasons for that is, one, that we're doing three more blocks than last year. And we're also doing an additional six blocks of sidewalk, strictly sidewalk. That's on Second Avenue Southeast and Fifth Street. So the material testing for the concrete is the big reason why it's about $10,000 more. So looking for approval for Chosen Valley to do the testing.
So the total's 41,370?
That's an estimate because it, yes, it's an estimate on how, how many cores they do on the concrete and stuff like that. But they're usually pretty close to that dollar figure.
Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve Chosen Valley testing.
So moved.
Sean made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconds it. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, what else do you have there, Matt?
There's another two, or it's not mine. There we go.
Okay.
I'll take the next one. Rebecca Kurtz with Ellers. And the resolution for reimbursement is tied with financing for the, calling for the sale of the bonds, which we'll do in a second here. But really, adopting this resolution preserves the city's ability to make sure that you are able to reimburse yourself for all expenses that may occur prior to having those bond proceeds in place. And so the dollar amount that's in there is higher than what probably needs to be. But you can think of it as kind of that insurance policy to make sure that any of those preliminary costs can be fully reimbursed through the bonds as, as planned.
Okay. I make a motion to approve resolution 25-04-07-02.
Okay, there's been a motion by Bruce. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconds it. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, pre-sale report.
All right, so that's going to be me again. And I believe in your council packets, you have a report that looks kind of like this, that summarizes the details for your street and utility project this year. So the item before you is to call for the sale of $5,350,000 of general obligation bonds. It is the Series 2025B because we're going to talk about the police station, which was the A issue. Again, this follows up to really finance the street and utility projects for 2025. It also includes $105,000 in equipment certificates for equipment related to the golf course. But with the street and utility project, it is just under $5 million for total street and utility. The street portion is just under $4 million. For that portion, debt service would be paid from special assessments to the benefiting properties and then the balance through a tax levy. The water portion is $525,000. These numbers include not only the project cost, but also related cost of issuance for, for that purpose. Debt service for the water portion would be paid through the utility revenues from the water fund. Similar for the storm portion, which is $415,000, with debt service being paid from utility revenues from the storm fund. The sanitary sewer portion is not going to be bonded for. Cash will be used to pay that portion of the project. And then, as I mentioned, there is just over $100,000 for equipment related to the golf course. And that debt service would be paid through a tax levy. With this, bonds are being issued per the improvement statute, which means that a minimum of 20% is being assessed to benefiting property owners for the street and utility project. And then also, under the equipment certificate statute for the $105,000 for the golf piece, golf course piece of it. Bonds are being issued for a term of 15 years. That for the, for the entire issue, the equipment piece will be amortized over four years, but the street and utility will be amort, or over five years. But the street and utility piece will be amortized over 15 years. And that ties with the way the assessment revenue is projected to come in per the assessment proceedings that were held. Principal will be due in the years 27 through 2041. Interest does begin in February of 2026. So there will be an interest payment in February 2026, which we have capitalized. Bonds would be callable on February 1st of 2035 or any date thereafter. And that date was chosen. It's pretty standard with what we're seeing right now in the bond market for a call date without needing to pay a premium. If we call them prior to 2035, there likely would be a premium in the interest rate. So we've, we've tied that with where we would not be impacted by a higher interest rate. With that, the city does have a double A rating with Standard and Poor's. As you've done in your past issues, we are recommending having this rated. And so we do have a call scheduled with staff and Standard and Poor's and would be bringing that forward after we do have the rating, but selling these with the S and P rating. With that, just a couple other things to be aware of, since I, this is the first bond sale you've worked through with Ellers. I think we've talked about this before, but we do continually, regularly monitor all of your outstanding debt. And at this point, we don't have anything to bring forward for potential refunding or prepayment. But we do continue to do that, will continue to do that. And so at any point, even if it isn't tied with a pending bond issue, we'll bring that forward to staff if we do find some opportunities for you on that. With this, there is a resolution that's been prepared by Kennedy and Graveney, your bond counselor or bond attorney, if you choose to move forward, that would call for the sale of this bond. That would really kick off the process. We would then go forward. And I would be back here on May 5th with results from the sale that you can consider for awarding it. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question to send our rating. When do we find that information out after, immediately after your call? Or is there a?
It, we are looking at having the rating call around, I believe the date is April 17th, plus or minus. It usually then takes about a week to 10 days before we get, typically before we get the result. On their processes, they have the call with us. They then complete their analysis. They take it to a committee. And after they go through their committee process is when we receive the rating and the report.
And then we're locked in on that for that $5 million.
With the rating you then, that you're, you're, when they, once they publish that report, that rating becomes public and is out there and can't be changed, or the rating is out there. The actual sale gets locked in. I mean, you can change that up to about three days before the sale without having significant impacts.
You, you mean like the time and date of the sale?
Yeah, the time and date of the sale.
Well, and you're, okay, no, I get it. And I should probably let everybody know what I'm thinking. We have $5 million in bonds here. We're looking at 10 million plus dollar bonds for the police station.
Yes.
Further down, we have another $20 million in bonds that we get reimbursed for, but it still goes against our debt levy. So we're literally looking at like $35 million worth of, just tonight, if we approve everything. What would that do to our double A standing?
Oh, okay.
So I'm thinking a little longer.
Right, right. Okay, I understand where you're going with this.
But you know, it's compounding all these other issues on top of it.
Nope, I understand where your question is going. For the, the police and the street project, both of those are general obligation bonds backed with additional revenues. And so with those, they will likely, I can never guarantee anything. But I would anticipate that your rating would be maintained with the double A rating. Yet while I don't want to say it is not a significant amount of debt because I recognize the impact it has for, for residents from a rating agency standpoint, we do not believe that that is going to be a concern. It's been in your, your plan. It's been discussed over time. You're a regular issuer for your street projects. And so the rating agencies are familiar with, with that rhythm of those two issues. For the utility portion or utility project in 2026, that I will say likely, and I should back up one more step. While the city maintains its double A rating, they actually rate individual issues. So we say you have a double A rating, but they look at, what they will do is rate the 2025A and the 2025B bonds and reaffirm the, the rating on all of your other debt. And so it would be typical for the utility project in 2026 to likely have like a double A minus rating. That is what we say one step down from your rating as a general obligation, backed with also, also other revenue sources. And that is really a pretty standard process through both of the rating agencies, or all three of them, that when you do bonds that are pure revenue bonds, they're rated one, one step down. So I wouldn't be surprised by that just because of the type of bond that we are looking at for the utility piece. Now with that said, if you did another street project in 2026, that likely would maintain the double A rating.
Rebecca, could you explain revenue bond, just for people of general obligation?
Absolutely. So with these, these bonds for the street and then also that we'll talk about on the police station, they are general obligation bonds, which means that when you issue and sell those bonds, you are pledging your, the, the term is your full faith and credit. And regardless of what happens, you will levy taxes to make sure that those bonds are being paid. Now, we recognize that with this street project, there also are some utility revenues that are going to come in to play, to pay that debt service. But basically, you are making that promise that you will levy taxes to pay off a general obligation bond. For the utility project in '26 that would be issued, or that we are discussing issuing as a revenue bond, that is pledging purely the revenue from the project to pay the debt service. So that does not necessarily, and this would be something we can, you know, continue to discuss. But at this point in time, it does not necessarily have that full faith and credit pledge that if revenue is not sufficient, you would levy taxes for the shortfall. And so that is the reason why many times we find revenue bonds being rated one step lower than a general obligation bond is there could be more risk with it.
So if, if the utility bond is one step below, you're saying that it won't affect anything moving on in 2027 or 2028 if we need a new addition to the water treatment plant, or whatever it might be?
I, I will, I will say, I, I can never promise anything. But if we look at history on how they have looked at other communities and large debt projects, at this point in time, I, my opinion is that I would not be concerned about that. And I would not see a rating change due to continuing to do regular projects or ma, larger maintenance projects that need to be done to, to maintain your infrastructure.
So what, the one step below, what, how would that change the interest rate on this? A $5 million street project, if we're paying 3.5% and we go one step lower on, because of the debt load that we're carrying?
Right.
What would that do to the?
Well, and again, that one step would be more, not necessarily related to the debt load that you have, but more related to the type of bond that, that utility bond would be. Because again, we are proposing it be a revenue bond versus pledging to levy taxes regardless. And, and so with that, it, I, I would say it might be about a percent higher in interest rate, but not necessarily tied because of the rating, just because that type of bond has a little more risk to it if you don't have the general obligation pledge.
Okay, thank you.
That's a really long answer for me saying I'm not sure. I don't, I don't have concerns with you continuing to do projects like you have been doing to main, maintain infrastructure, keep public capital project, or keep public facilities and capital projects maintained and seeing any decrease in your, in your rating. If you have a plan and, you know, are working that plan, that has a lot of value in the rating agency's eyes.
So when the call happens, it's Robin, Josh, and you on the call?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, typically.
Okay.
Again, on this bond issue, how much is really going to be? The general fund would take, take a burden of, how much of the $5 million is really reflected for the general fund?
We are. Let me get to my right page here.
There's a lot of other aspects to it. And of course, this is backed, a lot of it's backed by assessment dollars too. And that affects how the rating companies look at it. And if it's consistent with previous issues and things like that, and the strength of your tax capacity, that all enters into it. So, so when we're looking at our responsibility for paying it from the general fund, it's a percentage of the total.
We are estimating, and again, this is using current rates plus 50 basis points or half a percent. So we have estimated an interest cost of two point, or 4.2. We'll see what that is. We've tried to be conservative with that. But under those assumptions, the levy piece, when the golf course equipment is outstanding, is about $247,000. And then it drops to about $222,000 after the, the equipment piece has been amortized.
That's the amount of the general fund?
That is, that is the annual principal and interest payment from your levy.
From the general fund?
From the general fund, yes, yes.
And we'll talk about the utility bond later, but there's a lot different, many more different aspects to it. Especially since we are relying a lot on the, the agreement, the promise to pay from Southern Minnesota Municipal Association. So that's a big factor in what's their credit.
Rating.
Rating, and how, what's the value of them backstopping the issue? And that's important. So it's a revenue issue, totally different than as far as supported by the tax dollars.
Right, I just was worried about the, the total of everything that we are technically responsible for. If Simpah folds up, I'm not saying they would, but I mean, if they were, they're going to come after.
We're totally responsible for, but I just don't want to confuse.
Yeah.
The financial taxpayer dollars supporting the utility issue, they are, but not in the way you might be thinking of it.
No, I.
It's through revenue, not through property taxes.
No, I knew that. I was just looking at the total and what else is on the horizon? And if moving forward, how is this going to affect me, not this year, or even next year, but in '27, '28, '29? And I just want to make sure that we have a good handle on.
Right.
I agree. Okay, so any other questions? Otherwise, there's a resolution there. Providing issuance of sale and general obligation bond Series 2025B. Does somebody want to offer that?
I make a motion to approve the resolution, or 25-04-07-03. Resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bond Series 2025B in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $5,350,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconds it. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, at this time, the public is invited to be heard on matters, not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. If you want to speak, just come up to the podium, state your name and address, and go from there. Does anybody want to speak? Going once, going twice. Okay, next item up for, I was going to say next item up for bid. I want you to get too much prices right, I guess. The Braz event venue, public hearing. So do you want to start it out before I, does anybody have anything to talk about before I do the public hearing?
No, I didn't, don't really, I guess, have anything to add. This has to do with issuing a liquor license for the Braz, so.
Okay, so if council doesn't have anything, I will open the public hearing. Does anybody want to address the, the council in regards to the issuance of an on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license at the Braz event venue at 212 West Main Street? Does anybody want to address the council? Going once, going twice, going. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing on the Braz event venue. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, second by Sean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So I don't see, so are we going to do a resolution here?
Uh, so.
Or does it come up next meeting?
It does not come up next meeting, so this is basically the application for it.
Okay.
We haven't traditionally done resolutions for these.
Okay, so it's just a simple motion?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll offer a motion to approve the approval of the issuance of the on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license.
Second.
So there's been a motion by me, seconded by Bruce. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next one is, can somebody help me?
Lafitte?
Lafitte.
Lafitte.
Lafitte Royale at 408 West Main Street. Approval of the issuance of a consumption and display liquor license.
I did not have anything to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anybody want to address Lafitte Royale as far as the liquor license during the public hearing? Going once, going twice?
Is this addressed the same as the depot?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's what it is.
Okay.
So with that, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Maggie made a motion, seconded by Bruce. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So with that, I would take a motion to approve the issuance of the consumption and display liquor license.
So moved.
Second. Rick made the motion, Bruce seconded it. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next item up is the pre-sale report on the police station capital improvement plan. Hi.
Hi, hi again. And again, I have a second pre-sale report that I believe is in your packet. We have taken the information and discussion from the last work session and incorporated that into what we are bringing forward today to call for the sale of bonds for the police facility. The action is to call for the sale of $10,430,000 of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, Series 2025A. Again, this is for the construction of the new police station. A couple things I want to know.
the new um police station, a couple of things I want to note about this issue is that we have um structured into this to use three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in cash from the building fund to um help write down the cost and also eliminate the need for capitalized interest and reduce then a portion of the bond amount, um, in addition, we adjusted the project costs, um, and further reduced the overall issuance by reducing the contingency in the project, um, as you may recall, we discussed that there was about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that could be available for a contingency versus bonding for that, so those two adjustments have been made, um, as we structured the proposed ten million four hundred and three thousand dollars. This bond would be issued under the capital improvement plan authority, um, as we approved the plan at a meeting about a month or so ago, um, with that, I do want to just note that I think we had some dated numbers in the capital improvement plan for um your, your annual debt service, um, that cannot exceed the zero point one six percent of the estimated market value, um, we have updated that number now that we have twenty five market values available, and that maximum debt service number is um one point six eight million, but as you look farther into the packet, um, you would see that we are estimating debt service to be closer to seven hundred thousand, so we're well within our, our statutory um limit for that. These bonds do count against the debt, net debt limit for the city, or that three percent of the estimated market value, um, with this proposed issue, again, an updated number is that you would still have about twenty million available in debt limit, um, after this issue is completed, and to just further um clarify that debt limit, or the numbers that count against the debt limit are bonds that are paid solely by um property taxes and do not include assessments or utilities, so, so your street project um does not count against that debt limit, the hundred thousand dollars for the golf course does count against it. Um, again, we talked about this a little bit, um, a few minutes ago, but the bonds would be general obligations um of the city where you pledge your full faith and taxing power, with debt service being paid by tax levy. Another um change we made based on the discussion last time was that we have structured the bonds to have a thirty year term, um, principal will be due beginning in twenty seven, and um they would mature in twenty fifty five, um, interest is due every six months, beginning in February first of twenty twenty six, um, and again, that not, that would be the cash coming into the project would help pay that first interest payment. With that, similar to what we discussed on the previous issue, we would go through the rating process, that actually will take place, it will be the same rating call for both bond issues because of timing, um, and so with that, um, assuming that you do want to move forward, there is a resolution, um, when you're ready to consider it, again, drafted by your bond attorney Kennedy and Graven, um, we would look at, I do have my date here, look at having the rating call, again, with staff and myself on April sixteenth, um, an official statement would be distributed April twenty fourth, and then um we'd be back here on May fifth with results um from the sale that day, with funds being available May twenty sec-, May twenty second, um, if you choose to move forward, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions of the council for Rebecca? Does somebody want to offer that as a, that resolution?
Well, wait, I want to make this statement here.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, this is our chance right here to, and I hope you guys thought about it, I hope people have reached out to you and talked to you, I don't think it's, I don't think the people of New Prague are on the side of this, I'm not sure it's needed at this time, I know the station is not ideal, I've said it many times, um, but when you look at it, there's two people, the two record technicians up front aren't actually in that back office, you got a chief and a detective that are in offices already, and two patrol officers on a, on any given time that are, should be out patrolling, so really, to utilize a brand new twelve million dollar, eleven million dollar, almost eleven million dollar building, um, for, for twelve police officers where most of the time they're, except maybe for a few minutes when they're in between shifts, um, is not um a good use of, of our tax dollars, I drove by the Bell Plain one today, it's a tin shed, they don't have problems recruiting, they don't have, they don't have problems with parking out back, they don't have eighteen stalls that, uh, i- inside the facility, um, and it looks like it's fifty, sixty years old, and I think a lot of you have seen it on Main Street, so, um, given the people right now and the markets and everything else, I don't know if that's, if this is the right time for it, um, I'll acknowledge that, yep, two years from now, that could be a million dollars more, could be a million dollars less if, uh, uh, the tariffs and whatnot are going on right now, uh, coming to play, and we are in some type of recession and people are bidding more aggressively, uh, so, I just want you guys to think about it, I've, I've said my, my piece enough, I'm voting no for it, uh, just because I don't think this is the right time, I would have liked to seen us tie in, we've talked about a new government center, city center, uh, city hall, maybe we could have tied that in, um, this came out of really quick, there wasn't long-term planning, it just seemed like it popped up out of the agenda, and even though we threw out, and we wanted to slow it down, it never really got slowed down, we'd had a special meeting last, last Monday, uh, to go over it, and of course, it wasn't, um, it wasn't public, like, people could have showed up, but it wasn't a regularly scheduled meeting, and I just don't like that whole process, it just seems um aggressive and, uh, and moved way faster than I've seen almost everything in my fifteen years of being on this council move at, at the government pace, and it used to drive me nuts that things moved so slowly, but this thing has moved really fast, so, anyways.
Anybody else want to make any statements?
Well, I feel, I feel I need to make a comment because I just, I, I can't, I, I can't see the comments that were being made there consistent with what I see the history has been, um, I think we probably started this in two thousand twenty one, um, when the facility needs assessment was talked about, and then we did the facility needs uh process, this was the number one need that was determined for the city, um, and then working through that process, when we talked about the police, um, facility, this has been going on for almost three years, so, there isn't any way that I could, that I would say that this has been rushed, if anything, there's been criticisms documented uh in the newspaper and elsewhere that we moved too slow on it, so I, I'm really.
I have a different memory than a lot of that, than I could have, and I'm not saying I couldn't have forgot it, but I don't, I remember doing the need study, I don't remember this urgency, um, because we did do some upgrades back in twenty sixteen, or whatever year it was, fifteen.
So I, I guess I just want to say, I think the process was diligent, we did our due diligence, it was thorough, it's been talked about many times through many different meetings, and I haven't had, obviously, there's people that are concerned about the tax implications like we have been all the way through this process, and no one's excited about that idea of raising levy, but as far as the need and the issues that we talked about and why we're doing it, and the need that we have established, that was established by the uh person that did the work for us, I think that's been laid out and talked about a, a number of times through a number of processes, through a number of meetings and a number of workshops, um, that included many different people throughout the, the last few years, so, I see the process been very, very good, and of course, when we talk about the amount of money that's being spent, you have to kind of cringe sometimes about that, but that is, I feel, what the cost of this is, as far as the timing, there's all sorts of concerns about what's going on in the economy now in the last week or last few days, as we've talked about at the previous meeting, we're benefiting unusually or ironically by that, by the bid we received and the money we've already put into it, so we're at a point now where not doing it is probably financially much worse than, than going ahead and doing it, just because the, the substantially good bid we received, the fact that we got a lot of bidders, uh, because of the economic situation we're in, and the money that we already put towards the project in cash, so if we stop or don't do it, then obviously we're losing that money, but the, the terms, I mean, the market's doing all sorts of things out there, but this isn't necessarily a bad market to be issuing bonds right now, it's actually ironically maybe a favorable market because of what's happening with the interest rates out there, so, um, I definitely would support proceeding with it, um, not because I enjoy doing a ten million dollar bond and paying the taxes on it, but I feel it's the right thing to do, and it's in the best interest of the city to do it.
I agree with everything he said, and um I got a lot of positive response on it from the neighborhood, and, um, even on Saturday, I got a lot of compliments, so I, I, I'll agree with Bruce on that one.
And nobody was concerned with my, and just so it's on the rub, the record here and on TV, um, at Monday's meeting, which was just recorded, um, uh, auto, uh, with just audio, um, I had brought up a, a master electrician who looked at the plans, a twenty year plus, a guy in the business, who thought there was a lot of overkill in it, we asked the architect, um, a number of times if they could skinny it down and come up with something a little bit more reasonable, and that dollar figure never really changed a, a whole lot, and, uh, it's been consistently well over ten million dollars, so, um, that electrician looked at it and thought that he could have saved like a third of the money if we didn't do everything as elaborate as it was, um, and I asked him, what do you think the electrical part of that bid was, and he'd said it's probably ten percent, so it's a million dollars, and if he could save a third, that's three hundred and thirty thousand, and if we could do that with the HVAC, and we could do that with the stonework, and we could do that with, uh, the, the building stuff by being, um, a little bit more due diligent, um, I believe that there could have been significant savings, and we probably could have got down to the seven or eight million dollars, um, you know, I had a lot of people in the, uh, in the city that have mentioned that how could Chart build the building they built a number of years ago for two million dollars, and we're building a, something half the size, the twelve, um, so it's, just seemed like there was a lot of overkill, so I made my statement there.
Not building it for twelve.
We asked a question, I, I, you know, I, what do we do with that information that you provided, what can we do with it, we can go through all nine contractors and ask all fifteen subcontractors and have fifteen subcontractors times nine giving us, oh, I would have done this, you could have done that, that's what the public bidding process is all about, they've had their opportunity to, to be involved in the bidding process, as we talked about last time, that doesn't stop us from wanting to get value added during the building process and change it, if we can find ways to save money, that was the answer, but to provide um secondhand comments, as a public institution, we just can't, we can't do anything with that information, is my opinion.
Well, and I disagree, it's no different than if we were building a home and we decided I don't, I can't afford these type of windows, I have to have these windows, I can't put it in an extra window upstairs in my master bedroom because I'm at my limit, this is what I've been approved for, I think there's, we don't need, we could have brought this along and we could have, I think, said no to the, to the twelve or thirteen million dollar, and yet it came in at ten five, whatever it is, ten four, but, um, that was the, that was the recommendation off him, uh, off of the, the architect, and it seems like when they use tax dollars, everything's more expensive anyways, but then they can just go ahead and put in all the top things, and then we learned that indeed, they get paid a percentage of the overall bill, so there, right there, my dander gets up because that basically means that the more that project is, the more money his firm makes, so, I just think there could have been some more, and I think if the council would have been a little bit more aggressive with it, that we could have perhaps actually forced a eight million dollar building, that might have come in at six five, like this one did.
Well, you, we had all sorts of opportunities to be involved, and we were involved, and we did make comments, we did, I did ask questions about this, this is Chevy, a Buick, or Cadillac, and what are we going to build, but we had opportunities all the way through as we presented plats and drawings, and what type of uh value was going to be put in the building, to make comments about, no, we don't want to spend that much here or there or the other thing, and comments were made in the process, so all that process occurred, and all those opportunities were there, but after the fact to say that we should have done this or the other thing, when the opportunities were there, and if you wanted to do it, you had the opportunity, but.
I did voice that.
Yes, you did.
Every meeting I was at, I voiced my concern about this, I just never felt like I had the other four feeling the same way, and that's your right, I'm not, that's, you guys get to do that, um, but I just think, I just wanted to make my last appeal here because this is what it's gonna be right here.
Well, I just want to make sure, there were changes made based on our comments and reductions were involved in it, so it's not like we just accepted carte blanche, carte blanche.
There, there, but Bruce, there really wasn't, I mean, it was miniscule, the, the change that came about, um, and I want to say, just off the top of my head, it was like four hundred thousand dollars on a fourteen million dollar building.
Well, the most substantial change is not having a standalone facility separately, that was the first discussion in the facility needs, and it was toned down starting from there, if you remember, there is multiple, there are different options to start with, and this is what we ended up, so we're saving money because we're building on land the city already owns, we're adding it to an existing facility, um, and we toned back the size of the garage, if you remember, so we, but we provide for the ability to add on to garage to save money, so there was things done, and, um, different issues changed, so.
Okay, I'm gonna offer resolution twenty five dash zero four dash zero seven dash zero four, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation capital improvement bonds series twenty twenty five A, is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconds it, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, everybody, next item up is rail car repair by Cypress Rail and New Prague Mill, hey Kenny, or Ken, are you gonna?
Yeah, I'll take that one, I do have a PowerPoint that I'll put up on the overhead. All right, so we'll provide a little background information on the intermuse permit for the rail car repair proposed by Cypress Rail and New Prague Mill LLC, and this will be at one hundred Second Avenue Southwest in the currently zoned light industrial zoning district, um, as we've talked about this property in a number of different approvals in the past, um.
No, just let him go, he started.
I've saved a whole lot of time.
Huh?
I've saved a whole lot of time, if it'll be talked for a second.
We're lit, just, this is our process, so, sorry, Bill.
Um, so we have re-guided the property to Downtown Flex in the comp plan that was adopted by the council last fall, um, the Downtown Flex category has not been fully uh developed, what would be likely very similar to the B one Downtown Central Business District with other uses similar to what you see in the downtown, uh, from service to retail to restaurants, that type of thing, versus the current zoning as industrial, um, with the mill and manufacturing, that type of thing, um, so we had a couple of different meetings that we reviewed, the intermuse permit request, uh, February twenty sixth, um, staff recommended not to approve that intermuse permit, um, was tabled at that point, um, the planning commission asked staff to incorporate into an updated, um, continued report to include, uh, conditions including limiting the intermuse permit to a five-year time period, um, hours of operation being limited, um, adding landscaping, adding fencing, uh, that type of thing to look at a possible approval. at a possible approval. Those were reviewed at the March 26th Planning Commission meeting, and ultimately, the Planning Commission at that point did recommend approval, with kind of a two-phase approach with those conditions. Phase one would provide an 18-month time period for some aesthetic improvements to that north, northeast corner of the property, to match a rendering, which we'll show in a minute here. That would include establishing seed and topsoil on top of gravel, providing landscaping trees, fencing, and then removing of some outbuildings that are on that north end of the building, including a gas meter room. Phase two would, in, in, in time, provide for where they would add necessary parking to be paved as the interior of the building is built out with uses that may or may not need as much parking as other uses. So, we don't want to say put in 50 parking spaces if they're not maybe needed for a particular use. So, that was what was part of that recommendation from the, the Planning Commission. That's reflected in a resolution for approval included in your packet tonight for consideration. Just to give a background information, again, here's a copy of our brand-new future land use plan, showing that as Downtown Flex. A couple of things to note here, showing that they plan to use that area that has over hanging canopy at this point, and the rail spurs, and they want to fence that in, and we have a rendering and some other drawings here I have showing in a minute. We obviously had public comment, or public staff comment, and as well as a couple other comments during both of the Planning Commission meetings. There were concerns from the public on noise and other issues that were related. At the original public hearing, one of the residents was concerned about railcar movement, that type of thing, and then some similar concerns were relayed at the March 26th meeting by one resident as well. Ultimately, again, the planning staff does not recommend approval of the conditions, or the intermuse permit, and we maintain that the original drafted denial and findings should carry forward, but the Planning Commission did bring forth the recommendation. And I do want to note again, the staff's appeal to you would be that we do not believe that it fits with the Downtown Flex future land use designation that the brand-new comp plan came up with, and it just wouldn't fit well for the development of the downtown There's just more noise information in there. We do believe that activities from the railcar repair would be very likely over and above the MPCA noise limits for 50% or 10% of the hour, and mainly, that would be due to the businesses on the north side of Main Street, and some apartments that are located there above the first floor of particularly the Rusty Spoke, and then generally our nuisance code for anything that reasonably maintains or annoys or injures or endangers the public health, safety morals, or comfort of any considerable members of the public. So, that was our main concern from staff. The rendering on the left is really what was the basis of the Planning Commission, saying that they liked the look of that, and wanted to make sure that within that phase one, that the landscaping and the fencing around the rail spur that kind of extends north of the building would be fully fenced in and screened with the other aesthetic improvements, including removing those outbuildings. This rendering shows the parking lot being fully paved, as if parking was fully needed, but they indicated that they don't have definitive users within the north end of the existing oldest portion of the mill, the A mill, and the Planning Commission added a condition that the paving would just need to be done when it's needed per the zoning, and that it could just be grass and seeded over until that point. And that's what that vegetative plan on the left basically indicates, that it would just be graded and seeded with the boulevard trees being added for the interim phase. Just a couple of other existing pictures of it, what it looks like out there today, nothing really new from anybody that's been by there before. Really, a side on the back would be largely hidden from the public, other than Chief Rinda's landscaping business to the south, and a little bit from Second Street Southwest right away there. And again, although staff recommended denial, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the intermuse permit with the findings and conditions contained in the resolution. It's in the packet for the meeting here tonight. So, with that, I think I'll just leave up this particular slide. If you have any questions of staff, and obviously, Bill representing New Prague Mill LLC, it sounds like he would like to make a comment as well.
Does council have any questions for staff? Otherwise, Bill, come on up. Just state your name and address.
Bill Gibson, and I'm part of the mill.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, I, I want to thank each of you for the support of this project. I, I've met with each of you, and I, I feel that tonight would be a positive vote for New Prague. It's very clear that you're all of a passionate about the town's future, so. But we're not going to cross the finish line. We started this in November. We had a concept meeting canceled in December, that pushed it back. We also had a tabled meeting where, where they were looking for conditions. Because of the delays and the uncertainty of the business flex, the, our customer has chosen to look other places for a Plan B, and he found one in Mankato. So, unfortunately, I got the call the day after the last Planning Commission meeting, and, so we don't have a customer anymore. So, I believe that New Prague, New Prague lost big on that day, and I lost even bigger. This, this ensures that the silos and rails are not going to make any noise, ensures that there's not going to be any sound, any smells. We're not going to have a new business, we're not going to have new jobs, we're not going to increase the tax base. It's just gone, it's a forever thing gone. And now, we have a silos and, and rails that are going to be forever on our skyline that will be empty. There's no one person to blame. The process, the rules are not friendly to this process, to this property, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Sorry, Bill.
So, with that said, are you withdrawing then this?
Yeah.
I mean, or, he doesn't have a customer, or, do we?
I guess without a formal withdrawal, the act, the item is still in front of the City Council for a decision.
I think you just withdrew it.
You don't get more formal than him saying I don't want this no more.
So.
Yeah, I, I would like to confirm with our attorney, but I think this time, if we need to revisit and properly close it out, we can, but I.
Let's table it to properly close it out.
Yep.
So, I'll make a motion to table this.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is the width and proposed lot line setback.
Yes, related to the mill property, once again, we did have a request from New Prague Mill LLC for a variance for minimum lot size and lot setbacks to existing buildings, so that they could accommodate a lot split of the property, and we'll run through that here quickly. So, what they're looking to do is really separate the south portion of the building that contains the loading docks, the firing range, and it's basically the newer part of the building. That would allow them to separate that up, potentially sell it in the future, but in the short term, they indicated at the Planning Commission meeting, it allows them to change some things around on their insurance, to kind of show that portion of the building complete, full, fully leased up, and move on from that and continue to build out the rest of the site and continue with renovations. So, because they're proposing to basically draw a line right down the middle of the building between the old A mill and that, we'll call it the newer addition, the warehouse portion of the building, we had to have zero lot line setbacks for the north property line between building wall to building wall, and then for maximum land coverage on that newly created lot on that south portion, to be 63% of the building coverage. Normally, we have 40% limit, but that's under the I-1 light industrial. Again, this whole site has been moving towards the business flex, or Downtown Flex designation, which would likely have a, no maximum building coverage like every other building in downtown. And then the other thing to note was that the minimum lot width for setbacks, they're looking at to be reduced to 76 feet versus the ordinance requirement as well. And that was basically some right of way off the gravel Second Avenue, just by the fact that they wanted to keep some frontage for the larger portion of the lot that also butts Main Street, and it'll make more sense in a minute here when I put up the drawing, how this all plays out. But really, in a nutshell, what it comes down to is if it was in the business flex zoning or Downtown Flex zoning, we wouldn't have needed the variances or the, for setbacks or coverage. So, this is a, over, on the overhead here, you can take a look, the, really hard to see the blue versus the red line, but again, just splitting off that portion of the building, the majority of it would still be the portion of the site that has not fully been redeveloped at this point, but again, could be sold off to a different party at some point, but they are not indicating that they were doing that at this point. Just some other pictures, we've seen these a million times. 2FIC is getting close to finishing up there, is a kind of an anchor tenant on that south portion there. Ultimately, staff and the Planning Commission do recommend approval of the variances to allow that lot split to occur. So, with that, I'll just put the overhead site map up for everybody.
Any questions of the council? Bill, do you want to speak to this one or not? Okay, pretty straightforward. All right, I'll offer Resolution Number 25-04-07-06, variance V2 2025 lot line setbacks. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick makes a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, the authorization of issuance of the, for the generation.
Sorry again, Bill.
Go ahead there, Mr. Yimmich.
Mayor and council, on behalf of the New Prague Utilities Commission, present the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds and acknowledgement of bids and improving authorization process in the connection and planning construction of the electrical generation plant, or the power system for the New Prague Utilities Commission project. I, I've mentioned it a few times to, in different occasions, but Southern Minnesota Municipal Power Association, SIMPA, New Prague's wholesale power supplier, informed utility members over the past year of changes needed to, to meet capacity requirements. These changes align with the growing demands and support the capacity limitations of wind and solar resources that will be mandated by the state of Minnesota to meet the 100% carbon-free mandate. SIMPA and its members will need to build dispatchable generation, in other words, generation that can be called upon with near 100% reliability, to provide short-term capacity when renewable resources are not available. SIMPA has offered its members the opportunity to expand their generation capacity under a 20-year capacity agreement that will pay members for new generation assets. This opportunity aligns with New Prague Utilities' need for additional generation to be used when there are regional transmission outages and to support operations of the distribution system. Currently, New Prague has 17.5 megawatts of local generation and a peak system load of approximately 18 megawatts. The planned addition of 11.3 megawatts with an estimated cost of 18 to 20 million will serve the needs of New Prague for the foreseeable future and be funded through a 20-year capacity contract that is being offered by our wholesale power supplier, SIMPA. Just a few comments I'll make, and then I'll stand for questions, and we can also go through some of the information I've shared in the packet. The primary reason for this resolution is to ensure that the council is fully informed of the Utilities Commission's, Commission's decision to move forward with this project, and that the council supports the required bonding that will be needed, that will need to take place in 2026. You may be wondering why we are asking for approval now, when we won't be going through the bonding process or approval of a bond sale until 2026. The Commission had to go out for bids on this engine package to get true costs, to see if the project was feasible, and to place equipment orders due, due to there being nearly a two-and-a-half-year lead time on projects of this magnitude. The Commission and legal counsel, Kennedy and Graven, wanted the council to be aware of future bonding requirements for this project and have approval on record. Construction of the building portion of the project will not start until mid-year 2026. Therefore, bonding will not be required likely until sometime early in 2026. NPUC plans to use cash reserves to get the project started. Some of the benefits of this project will be that New Prague needs to build additional generation if it wants to continue to cover the entire city load in times of transmission outages. Staff in the Commission have been considering generation additions prior to this option being available to us. This 20-year capacity contract with revenues of $1,425,000 a year will be used to make the bond payments, and after 20 years and the bonds are paid for, the utility stands to have revenues of approximately $1.3 million a year on a plant that I would estimate has a life of at least 40 years. I've attached some kind of, some supporting documents along with the resolution that I'm willing to go over with, with you, and/or I have Commission Member Nikolai here with us, Rebecca's here to answer any questions if, if need be, and also Bruce Wolf. I think the thing we should really look at is obviously what's, is important in regards to the financing, and that's on your page 137. And truly, we just did some, some estimates here of, of what projected costs will be. We, we do know about half of what the costs are for the engine package, that, that has been firmed up, and actually, those orders have been placed. The rest of it will be the building and the mechanical and electrical for this project. We, we just made an estimate of 19,653,000, and we used an interest rate of 4.27%. You can see the, the rates, or the mortgage, not mortgage, but the bond payments, and how that turns out there on that schedule. Again, I want to make reference to when we do get to, it pays nearly 100% of the needed revenues to pay the bond payments, and in 2048, again, when the bonds are paid off, it would yield a revenue to the city of New Prague of approximately 1.3 million. New Prague is part of probably, I'm going to think in five communities that are looking at doing this. SIMPA has to build generation assets, no matter what. If New Prague doesn't build it, it's going to get built somewhere else, guaranteed, and our wholesale rates are going to reflect that no matter what. So, my recommendation to the Commission has always been, why not have it here in New Prague, where we can use, utilize that asset to back up our generation fleet that we currently have, and continue to offer New Prague the ability to carry loads in times of storms or transmission outages, so that really our residents, for the most part, are never without power. Kind of just ideal timing, how it's turned out, how New Prague has kind of outgrown our generation assets that we have now, due to growth. And I feel that this will really kind of lead New Prague into the future as far as having an asset that's going to have continued value for, for New Prague, not, not only for backup energy assistance, but in future revenue. I also included just a, a time, a schedule in there, an estimated schedule. Actually, I'm kind of happy to, to report that some of these schedules, we, last week, in fact, we got to move them around a little bit. We found out that engines are trending a little bit ahead of schedule, as much as a quarter ahead. I included just a, a rough plant layout of what a, a plant could look like. This one, that, the picture of this plant is actually in St. Peter. And then, our, our building layout will be on land that the utilities currently owns over by the west substation, close to the fire department, that area over there. It fits nicely on that property there on, on the front, adjacent to Sixth Street, and will, it'll kind of cover up the existing building that's there now. Ties nicely into what we need for future distribution out of that facility over there with the growth in the industrial park, and so that, we're going to make some improvements at that at the same time. But I would stand for any other questions that the council may have at this time.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Jerry.
Could you go with, for the most part, it's all going to be paid back anyway?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, and what's also nice about it is currently SIMPA staffs our current plant with four full-time employees. That is under a contract arrangement with SIMPA. That will continue and they have definitely said that we they have no issue with the those employees working in this power plant as well, even though this this will be an asset of New Prague's. They feel that it's important as overall benefit to to the association. And I actually got to as as being a board member of SIMPA, I got to be on the on the contract writing community committee for writing the power sales contract for the for this asset. And they we've pretty much got to write it in there as to make the members whole is really was the goal of goal of doing it. We know that these assets need to be paid for by the membership and we feel that having the assets in the member communities has a lot of value and therefore the contracts are written so that New Prague benefits and so does so does the association. And they've done this for actually twenty years. We're now going into the second round of twenty years. St. Peter, Preston, Princeton, Litchfield are now going into their second twenty-year term and having those contracts renewed so we know it's a viable source going into the future. A plant like this will not run very much. I'll be surprised if it runs more than, say, twenty to forty hours a year. In fact, our plant last year, being called for contingency use, only ran twelve hours. But in essence, it really doesn't matter. It needs to be there for capacity for the grid as a whole. The last thing we want to have happen in the Midwest is what kind of happened to Texas a few years ago. This are the assurances that are being put in by our grid area through Mysel to secure that that will not happen to us, especially with all of the solar and wind assets going into the going into the grid right now. It's assets like this that are really going to make the baseload sustainable. So I feel it's an ideal timing and an ideal project for New Prague.
And Bruce, I think you had mentioned a while ago that the baseload has to be at a certain percentage.
Correct. So Mysel is the footprint that all of the utilities here in the Midwest, all the way from Ontario down to down to Texas, not including Texas. We have to put generation assets into that into that footprint is equal a hundred and twenty to your point, a hundred and ten percent over what our capacity draw is going to be. So all of the utilities got to contribute either by purchasing an asset or owning their own asset and putting it into that to that grid for everybody to use. So having the local generation asset is is ideal. There was some scare a couple of weeks ago when the tariffs started with Canada, that electrical scare, you know, there's going to be price hikes. Well, no, that's not not going to contribute to our our inputs and outputs because we have generation assets that are into the into the Mysel district, so therefore we're not susceptible to outside price gouging. So it really firms that up when you can have assets, we call them iron on the ground, when you can have those assets locally or at least in the district to protect from price gouging or price changes going into the future.
Sweet.
Yeah, Dwayne, I heard you touch on this on K check.
Yes.
Who is this gentleman?
You've got to come up, Jerry, and you've got to state your name and address. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Not as limber as I used to be.
Jerry Minard.
Okay.
How you doing, Jerry?
Supposed to come up here and talk, huh?
Yeah, state your name and address.
This morning on K check, I heard you bring up the subject of what we're talking about here with the generators. And the question in my mind would be, excuse me, the question would be, you know, we live next to that generating plant forever, okay? And and we're glad we have it. The real question is, in an emergency, our outage, we're hooked up with SIMPA, can we count on that? Hundred percent that if there's a power outage that that's going to kick in and satisfy all our needs because the subject came up here a few years ago and everything was cool. But now, you know, we're expanding and hooking up with another facility coming in here and we kind of like some assurance that we can count on the power in the event of a outage. Otherwise, we would be putting in more sub little stations of our own to, you know, what do they call these, you know, a power generating next to your house? There's a name for it. I can't think of it. But so so the jackpot question is, in, okay, so this is all operational for backup and so then there's an outage. Can we count on it or we're hooked up with other facilities? Are we going to be committed to deliver our power out of town or something?
I'll address it. He just he just addressed that, that this this is going to be for the city.
That's going to be for us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He addressed that. Yes, we do put energy online, but the city's the priority, so.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So I mean, it's it's great that we can count on that.
Yep.
You know, that's great, that's great. So that was my question because I know the subject did come up a few years ago also.
Mm-hmm.
And and now that we're expanding, it's good to know that we come first, in other words, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Jerry, what's your address?
So.
Where do you live at? We're going to have to refer to the record.
Well, our address is two thirteen First Street Southeast.
Gotcha.
We're adjacent to the original power plant there.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay.
Bruce, just to clarify, the we have the relationship with SIMPA, but our generation can be used as backup in case this transmission that we can't get it. And what's kind of nice about our community, we have a lot of redundancy as far as being able to do that. We can basically survive on ourself as an island, not have to worry about the connection with SIMPA if we had to.
Correct.
This additional generation provides more of an assurance that we can do all of that today as ourself and then not only do that, but then hopefully take care of some of the growth of the community into the future. It's hard to say how much future growth we're building with this because the demand for energy is projected to be very high growth in the next few years and into the future with data centers and whatnot. So it's hard to say how much future capacity we're really building here, but that's the other benefit to New Prague is that if we had to, we can take care of growth and then actually provide electricity on our own without SIMPA if we had to.
Correct.
So we talk about outages and I'm familiar with that being on different providers in the past, but we don't have, because of the way we're set up, we have pretty good service. I would say lack of outages, especially compared to a lot of other providers.
Correct. Yeah, this is just going to give us more redundancy. Two two locations in town is ideal so that if there's distribution issues, we can feed it from either side. Even operationally, it gives us a lot of flexibility on our on our system, how how we maintain New Prague.
Bruce, are you going to need?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Bruce, are you going to require other additional employees then with two facilities?
No, we don't intend to have to have any more employees.
Okay. At one, what point would you see that and would SIMPA pick up the cost of that?
I'm sure I'm sure that it would either be the cost of the employee or an addition to the contract, Sean, in regards to how we did that. But I would say that would probably be the the next build after this one that would require more employees.
Okay, thank you.
And you do have the ability to sell electricity to the surrounding communities.
Yeah, and that's that's done through our wholesale provider. They're they're the they're the ones that would request us to provide that energy into them and in turn they supply all the fuel and everything to do that. So New Prague is not beholden to having to produce that energy should it be called on. That is that is a wholesale contract.
Okay. All right, does somebody want to offer the let's see here?
Yeah, there's two resolutions.
You'll take them, I think, Josh, two of each one separately, correct?
Yeah. So I'll offer a motion to approve resolution twenty-five zero four zero seven zero seven, authorizing the issuance of bonds, acknowledgement of bids and approving authorization process in connection with the planning and construction of the electrical generating plant, this power supply and system for the New Prague Utilities Commission project.
And Sean seconds it, maybe the motion. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries.
I'll also make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five zero four zero seven zero eight, declaring the official intent of the city of New Prague to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of the tax-exempt bonds or other obligations and establishing procedures for additional declarations of official intent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Rick makes a second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Okay, thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
If you'll excuse me a moment.
Do you? Okay.
Bruce, what do the other cities make now like Litchfield that's already been online twenty years, do you know? I mean, you said in twenty years, I mean, we'll start producing revenue with to the figure of one point three million.
Those contracts were renewed at current rates. They have been in five-year increments.
Okay.
And then the new contract now, it is negotiable between the the provider being SIMPA and the city of New Prague to negotiate new contracts should that rate be should be higher than than what we're currently at.
Okay.
So you always have the ability to open it?
We do. We've noticed that O and M costs have went up over the last few years considerably and so they opened up that made that contract available to be renegotiated so that the cities could be made whole.
Nice.
Yeah.
Do you know what that dollar figure is though for Litchfield or Princeton, one of those that are already?
They vary compared to what their input costs were.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. I'm just going to kind of wait till maybe it comes back.
Yeah.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, we can take a five-minute recess. We'll do that, put it on the record as well.
Okay. Mitch, can you put on the screen, not the agenda, but the video camera feed?
Please.
Item up on the agenda is the scale regional training facility discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, we've been talking about this for a few meetings now. Basically, that the scale RTF is kind of at a crossroads with aging facilities and scale itself as an organization did perform some studies to kind of get a look at what current costs are for the facility and what future costs could be. Over the last meetings or last few meetings, kind of the consensus of the council seems to have been that there does seem to be some benefit to being a member of the RTF. But while that benefit does exist, it's at a certain point, it becomes cost prohibitive to be a member and either the option of using that RTF facility as a non-member or using other facilities becomes a more viable option than being a member itself. So with the potential new police station in New Prague being built as well as the fire department's ability to do extensive in-house training, there are certainly options for public safety training outside of just the RTF. So I guess I have drafted a resolution in your packet that would kind of reflect these conversations. The resolution would declare the intent of the city of New Prague to participate as long as the city's costs remain at or below fifteen thousand dollars per year by the year twenty thirty with a reasonable expectation that there will be small increases over time. It also declares that the outdoor shooting range is the most important amenity for the city of New Prague and that the city would expect that it would remain usable for it to continue its member operation. And I guess I certainly stand for questions or we can look at possibly amending this resolution if the city council took something else from our conversations over the last few meetings.
Does this include Steve using the fire tower?
Yes. Yes, if you remember right, there were certainly options. I know our fire department in particular, and Steve can certainly talk to this if I say it wrong, as a non-member, it actually benefits our fire department more because they're able to be reimbursed for costs.
Right.
From the state while being a member, they're not, we're not able to get reimbursed for membership costs. So a lot of the a lot of the benefit that the city of New Prague would see out of this, especially going into the future, would be that outdoor shooting range where we could pull vehicles in and do scenarios from from the outside that we may not necessarily have that ability in other ways, plus just the ability to book and I guess use the rest of the facilities on a little bit shorter shorter term notice, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
That was going to be my question about the shooting range in particular, you know, what would be the benefits? And if we're talking about a scenario about pulling cars in, which I certainly understand the benefit of that, does it weigh against the cost for that? the benefit of that, does it weigh against the cost for that particular scenario? I don't know what other uses that shooting range may have, if it's more long-range? Or if the in, the indoor range here that's being built could be used? If another facility known in Prior Lake could be used for long-range and short-range target practice?
That's, I understand, the car isn't the only thing. I guess as a user of this range over many years, we can move around in it. When you're in a shooting range like here or in Prior Lake, you're in, just in a lane.
Static, okay, yeah.
You're just in a lane. So you can't take on scenarios like we pretend that there's a hostage at the courthouse. And you know, we take barriers and move in and take out the, take out the.
That's very helpful.
So, so we're, to me, we're a regular shooting range is just per se shooting and.
It's, yeah, it's more to qualify for your whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, understand. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Does somebody want to offer that motion of twenty-five? I'll offer it. I'll offer twenty-five dash zero four dash zero seven dash zero one, Scale Regional Training Facility Discussion, or, or this, this resolution to cap it at fifteen grand.
What are we paying now, Josh?
About eighty-three hundred.
Okay.
And so if you remember right, I believe it was a little over eleven thousand is what they assume the cost would be, assuming no changes were made by twenty thirty with all current members participating. Assuming any members drop out, then obviously that number, just to maintain the facility, will go up from eleven thousand per year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Sean seconds it. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is the City Administrator Purchasing and Contracting Authority.
Uh, yes, we talked about this a little bit last time. Long story short, section six point zero four of the charter calls out that annually the city shall set limits that the city administrator is able to make purchasing, purchases and contracts without first coming to the city council. Speaking with city attorney Scott Riggs, this is pretty common language that a lot of cities use, and he provided the example of Farbo, which sets the spending limits at twenty-five thousand on purchases and contracts discussed through the budget and CIP process, and ten thousand dollars on all other purchases. And I did put those in here. A big question that came out of the last discussion was whether this included the mayor, since the mayor is a signer on all contracts. Speaking with the city, speaking with Scott Riggs, he did mention that he felt in his opinion that the mayor, while not specifically called out in this, was also included. And this is how he has dealt with all of his other cities that also require city administrators and mayors. And the mayor is more included just on the fact that at the bottom of that six point oh four, that the mayor would also sign on behalf, but that there would be no policy needed for the mayor to have that authority to sign. So he did not feel that changes in the language for the policy were necessary for the mayor. So I can certainly stand for any more questions, or if you guys want to see different limits or anything like that. As I said last time, the general idea would be that first meeting of the year, when we kind of go through general city business, that annually this would be brought back for review, so.
I had a question, I think it's the fourth, one, two, three, the third paragraph and then on the fourth. But the third paragraph, I'm always impressed how attorneys can, that's gotta be a fifty-word sentence, but. When we get into this word jumble all the way through to that third line, not to exceed twenty-five thousand, and/or capital improvement plan, and ten thousand otherwise, and then except when necessary. I'm confused at what that actually means. So we have twenty-five thousand for items included in the budget and the capital improvement plan, and ten thousand otherwise. Okay, I, I think I understand ten thousand being anything that's not in the budget and not in the capital improvement plan. And then, then we have another negative except for, what, what is except when?
So that except for, and it does happen occasionally, many times we end up having to eat it. We, so in the state of Minnesota, it is required that public entities are provided at least thirty days to pay a bill. That way they can get through the public process and the city council and/or town boards can pay those bills. And there have been many, I think we had someone I got here, certainly my last job as well, they were eating those late fees and someone would say you have to pay within seven days. The city would just pay the late fee. Well, got a lot of those corrected. Problem is, the ones when you start dealing with national companies, that you say, hey, we're in the state of Minnesota, we don't have to pay your twelve-dollar late fee. They say, we don't care. Like, take, take us to court over this type of situation, we're not from Minnesota, we're from Washington, you have to pay our fee. So the except here that I read this would be a, hey, we have a, a bill of some sorts that they're tacking on a late fee.
Right, right.
And it would be a city, city council is not for two weeks, but we have to pay this in the next ten days, so we pay it not to get the late fee. That would be how I'd read that.
So is that, is the assumption being that we have some kind of credit card bill that's more than ten thousand dollars then? Because this only applies when it's more than ten thousand, is that correct? Because otherwise the ten thousand covers it.
Generally, I mean, on our credit card, we've never had a problem because we pay it every two weeks.
I guess the question, doesn't the ten thousand dollars cover almost every credit card bill and issue you have?
I would assume unless there's something rather large we put on the credit card.
So why would we have that last sentence which gives you authority from, it reads to me to be more than ten thousand? Do you know what I mean?
I, I certainly understand your question.
So it almost gives you the authority to approve a credit card bill for eleven thousand dollars?
If it was going to be late, I could see how you could read, yes, like I could, I could see how you could read that.
Maybe that's what we want, I don't know.
But I can, I can say we've never run into that situation with necessarily the credit card bill at this point.
But those charges would still be broken down by the individual department that.
Correct, correct.
So we'll still see that.
Correct, yeah. So what this does is it would mean that if I was buying a few office chairs because community development's broken half, we pick those up. Under the old system, it would be, we'd come to you guys and say, hey, the community development department needs three chairs because they broke last week, can we get those ordered? Under this system, it would be, hey, let's get those ordered. And then they'd still come to you guys for that, you'd see that final bill pay approval. And so the city council would still see all purchases that would go through, it just would take off that pre-authorization for certain purchases.
So we're still talking about you putting an asterisk or something on those situations where it occurs?
Correct, yes.
And the understanding is that you're gonna do this? Not on a, a regular basis, or?
No, yeah, the, the idea is certainly not to do this on a regular basis. For me, it would be doing it when the chairs break and we gotta get some chairs before the next city council meeting, or something like that. It would, and yes, I would, my intention would be to make those known, whether it's a small asterisk on the thing, so you can see where I use that particular power in the given year and for what for.
And then the second, the next paragraph, it talks about the resolution shall remain in effect until such time authorities granted change by resolution. I interpreted the charter to say it has to be done every year. We can't let it continue indefinitely.
I thought it's, and it says up here on top, at least annually.
Yes. The very first paragraph.
Does that?
And it's not consistent with the first paragraph?
Yeah. Well, consistent with the city charter, but it talks about the city charter up on top. The six point zero four, and then the.
So my, yeah, and I think we can certainly.
Establish it at least annually, but it's kind of muddies it up. It kind of restates it again.
So I, I think, yeah, I mean, as Robin made a point there, is that to change anything here necessarily, it would probably have to be done by resolution, but it would certainly be reviewed annually. I think that this particular paragraph could be, if for some reason we don't review it until the second meeting in January, it kind of covers that this basically remains in effect until it's reviewed again, if that sort of thing. I, I do know that Scott said he has some communities that don't review it annually. They basically just hang out and only review it if they feel like they need to make a change to it.
But our city charter indicates annually, correct?
Right, and so my understanding of how we have to do it would be that.
That we would.
It goes away.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So it's not in perpetuity, it, yeah, we have to address it annually.
Have to do a resolution, if you don't do a resolution, it goes away.
I suppose, yeah, I could see that.
This whole thing would go away if you didn't do it annually?
Uh, yeah, so I think what they're saying, Rick, is if for some reason it didn't get brought back every year, they, I forget to bring it back, then that power.
Is gone.
Is gone until it's brought back.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So that would be just part of the organizational meeting at the beginning of the year, when we do all our.
Correct.
Keeping.
But you're right, it does.
That second Tuesday after the first Monday.
I think that's just good practice anyway, so newest council members are involved in it and understand it, it's talked about. Because it is an audit issue, it's really done for audit purpose, or, you know, risk management tool, really.
Yeah.
So how do we address that sentence then?
Talking about the, the fourth paragraph?
Right.
Yeah.
I think if you guys wanted to eliminate that fourth paragraph.
I would say.
And so just basically, you could move the resolution amended with removing that paragraph.
I would say we keep part of the paragraph that's consistent with the authority of the New Prague City Charter, section six dot zero four, period, and the rest of it goes away. That way we have the authority to address it annually, or it has to be addressed annually.
Well, and, and if you read it, you know, the whereas is up on top, are kind of laying out the groundwork.
Yes.
And then, so be it resolved, is actually three through, three, four, and five are actually the resolution, laying it out.
Yes.
So it could stay the same, that's the way I read it.
Josh, could you tell, give me an example of, of situation where you needed the twenty-five thousand, but you didn't have it, and it somehow prevented, or slowed the process down?
Um, I don't know if it necessarily slowed the process down, we actually, this process came up just a couple months ago here, when we bought a new vehicle for community development. I think it ended up costing us, what, twenty-one? Twenty, twenty-one?
After, or before the trade.
Yeah, before the trade. I think we found the car and we were two weeks away from the city council meeting. I mean, we found it here in town, and luckily they were, they were good enough to hold it for us and whatnot. But that to me would be kind of the situation of, hey, we found the vehicle, we've been talking about it all throughout the budget season, the money's been sitting there, we found the vehicle, can we make the move on it? Because I suppose them as a car dealer could all say, eh, like, we have someone that'll buy it right now so we can turn this over and keep it going. And so that was a situation where it, it could have come into play, and luckily it didn't. Like I said, they don't, they don't happen tremendously often.
But it would still have to be approved in the, like the CIP.
Eventually, yes.
Correct, yeah, so we would basically just kind of the, the go under contract and start that whole process, correct?
Actually, we'd have a double approval.
Yeah, and then you guys would see it.
Okay.
Because, let's say it would be purchased, then the next council meeting, we're gonna be approving it, we're gonna be approving that purchase.
Payables, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's already been purchased.
Yeah.
Because you have the ability to do that.
Correct.
Well, I'm just thinking like right here, if I was looking down here, so you got the compensation study, RFP, whatever, if there was a, a green study that you wanted to jump in that was twenty thousand, and you thought, oh, this is good for the city, and you go and sign it, then maybe that runs contrary to what the.
Yep.
Someone didn't want to spend the twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, so that one in partic, like that one, let's just use it, if there's a green study that we, I found yesterday, or we'll say tomorrow. Because that is, was not included in the budget or CIP, that would not fall under the authority of the twenty-five, it would fall under the authority of the ten. And then so, that authority of the ten, let's say I found one for nine, ninety-five hundred. My job is the runner, I guess, of the administration organization who made that call, is I would have to speak to my boss as to why I made that call against what seemed to be the leanings of the city council. I mean, it would be me answering to you guys as a, someone who answers to the board, basically, of why I felt that was necessary without getting prior approval.
Okay.
But you could be getting approval by calling us.
Correct, yeah, so, I mean, I could also wait two weeks and come and talk to you guys, and you could say yes or no on it.
I guess I don't have a problem with raising it to twenty-five thousand.
You mean doing the ten and twenty-five?
Well, I think the ten we're locked in on, aren't we, right now?
No, no, this, there's currently nothing in place.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
Yeah. Yep, there's, it, it's been in the city charter now, I think, since twenty-fourteen, but there's been nothing, from my understanding, previous administrator never brought anything forward to put a formal policy in place.
Okay. Yeah, so both, I'm gonna make them all.
Yeah, you, go ahead, absolutely.
Well, is there any other questions?
No, I'll ask that again anyways, so, but anybody else have any other questions on the race? I'd take a motion.
Just for clarification, was there gonna be any changing to that second res, uh, result? I, I think stating that consistency with six point oh four, if that is the question, I do believe that the first whereas clause just establishes that six point oh four is. And so the cleanest thing to do would probably just to be, scratch that fourth paragraph.
Is that right, Maggie? Is that okay? Because I thought you had some, you wanted to keep a line or two in there.
No, she, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right.
No, no, I'm, I'm okay with scratching the fourth paragraph, because we are actually stating it in the very first whereas.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve resolution two-five dash zero three dash one seven dash zero four, giving the city administrator purchasing and contracting authority not to exceed twenty-five thousand on items included in the approved budget, and ten thousand otherwise, except when necessary to pay monthly utility and credit card bills.
As amended?
As amended with the removal of paragraph four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconds it, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next item, we're into general business, POPS Committee request.
Uh, yes, so as.
Just hang on a second.
I was just gonna mention that, as, as I mentioned in the past, I'm an officer of the Ford New Prague Foundation, which this matters, involves that foundation. A few months ago, I think I, Josh and I talked, and he conversed with the city attorney, and at some point in time, all city council members had the same issue when they're involving in the city and getting involved in an agreement or a contract, that creates a specific conflict. So at this time, I'm kind of getting at that area where I feel there's a conflict, and I think the attorney agrees with that. So I won't be involved in any of the discussion or decision-making involving this issue. Thank you.
Pop in. Okay, now go ahead.
Uh, yes, so as the city council's aware, we've kind of been going back and forth with the POPS committee on building a potential outdoor performance stage somewhere here in town. This does go quite a ways back, and so I will lean on Ken if I get general timeframes wrong. But we've been, I know the Outdoor Performance Stage Committee has been working on this for well over a year at this point. Back in, they originally did a study, they had come up kind of with three locations that they were interested in per se, Memorial Park, Sliding Hill Skate Park, and then what we are coining as City Center. I think we could egg a lot of names on that, we do on staff all the time. But ultimately, city council voted that if they were going to, and I believe, I do not believe the vote was unanimous, but if they were going to allow the facility to be built, that they would like it to be built over here in the vacant lot known as City Center. So at that time, we did have a, we were working with a few members of that POPS committee, kind of a, what does it look like over there? I know Ken has a number, had a number of soil studies. I know Ken has a number, had a number of soil studies from previously, um, and while. They weren't very specific to that exact location, there were certainly bores within those faci- those. Studies that fell within the range of where this facility would go. So. I've been working through this process and I tried to make it clear with the POPS committee representatives that. Should there ever actually be a request of the city, please do not assume that that request is just. Going to be taken up by the city, like, we need formal requests to make sure that, um, we're all on the same page. And so they did bring forward this request. They did end up having a soil study done specifically on the location over at City Center that this large facility would be. And through that, um, study, it was determined that, in fact, there are. Great soils for ducks, terrible soils for buildings, um, kind of on this spot. Uh, specifically, I believe it is, um, after a, was about ten feet of fill-ish, does that sound right? Um, there's ten feet of what is best described non-scientifically as muck, uh, kind of where the ducks used to hang out, so. Uh, there are multiple solutions that they could possibly work through. Um, and until they actually pick a solution, they won't know the formal cost of what that end result will be. Um, kind of the, kind of the two leading driving solutions would be to dig out the area and put down good soil. To be, um, build on, um, with, uh. Again, it could be twenty feet down, it could be thirty feet down, um, till you really get a good spot. And the other solution, I guess, would be to, um, essentially drill large piers into the ground at which this would sit on. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, I believe Mill Pond actually sits on piers, correct?
Yeah, the, uh, Phillips Square.
Or Phillips Square, um, so.
Yeah, but they got all that leaking in the basement, don't they? I don't think it's even working.
So, an- anyway, those are the, kind of the two solutions, um, and I say, we say potentially in the memo. Because they're not a hundred percent sure what it'll cost. If they start drilling that pier, um, they gotta drill it until it hits a certain. Pressure point, and then they say, okay, that thing's in there solid. Is that twenty feet, thirty feet, hopefully not forty feet? Um, you don't really know until you start drilling, uh, and the same kind of goes with the fill. You don't really know until you start digging into it how deep ultimately you are going to have to go. So, at, this is something that POPS has said, that while we were aware that there were terrible soils here. Um, we certainly didn't know the extent to the terrible soils. And so their request is for assistance with. Um, making these, I'll, I'll call them soil correct, corrections for the building, whether they dig them out or the piers. Because, um, while they are funding this, they did not calculate in the full possible extent for what these improvements could be. Um, as staff, we certainly went back and forth on this, um, a- as, as. As to whether the city should be, um, open or willing to help pay for any or all of these improvements. POPS has told us that, um, they are certainly willing to donate the facility, but feel that. Um, this land, because the city donated it, is certainly more up the city's avenue. How, um, giving it to them in a manner that, uh, is buildable for a facility. Um, I know as they looked at these facilities, I, I believe, uh, while there was certainly. Uh, differences of opinion across the committee, um. I believe the recommendation coming out of their particular study was that they would have preferred Memorial Park. And the Sliding Hill Skate Park, is what their study stated. Um, but ultimately, the city council chose this site, and so. I think their hope is that if the city council would like it here, that they would like a little assistance then on making sure the site is actually buildable. I, I, I will say at this point, it'd be nice if Bruce could speak, cause I know that he sits on the committee and could help kind of reflect some of those, but. Um, I, I don't, I don't want, I wanted to certainly honor that, him keeping that distance so that we don't have that conflict.
May I ask a question? So the soil borings, were they done specifically in. The area that the facility may be built, or were they done. Throughout the whole property?
So the, the ones that the POPS committee did, uh, we, I believe the city actually kind of marked out the boundaries of where this.
Yes.
The, the soil samples should go. So we kind of said, okay, through our, um. Small area plan, we, we would like the facility placed right here. This is where you should get your soil borings from. I, I do, I think. Along the general lines, it is in a lower spot on City Center. I think the general consensus is even. Without having the borings, that the farther north you go, the better the soils get, because you're just not sitting in the low spot where the ducks hung out.
Right, so would it make sense to move the site on the City Center property to something that is more. Advantageous building?
You, you would have to go, Maggie, nearly to right up along Second, uh, Street Northwest to really get in that area. And even there, at a point, you get low enough, you're hitting not-so-great, um, soils anyway. Um, not that muck and peat, but you're getting like wet clay and other things that. You, you're probably gonna have to do something, probably not to the extent of the particular area where they're looking at the building. It's all not great, and in general soils in New Prague are not great.
Right.
Anywhere.
Right.
Um, just kind of what we have, but, um, yeah, I, I don't know how that would. How that would really save money with all the other inputs that have already been put into.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was, you know. You know, random soil borings, or if it was concentrated in a particular area.
So the other soil borings we had, um, going back to the year two thousand, before we ever owned the property. Um, the soil, geotechnical work, they had, uh, planned to do eight borings at that time, they only did two. Cause that, that was when, um, some senior high-rise initially was getting potentially looked at there. And it was determined that after the second boring, that it was unsuitable for that type of a large building. Without significant corrections, and it was really for Phillips Square, quite frankly.
Okay.
Um, where, which ended up going over there needing them anyway, but, um, the one done in twenty-eleven, I believe, by Braun. Uh, who's the same firm that did it for, um, the most recent, um, findings. Um, they had done them sporadically throughout and, um, it was anywhere from, you know. Ten feet of muck to, uh, down to below thirty feet that they found muck. And it, it did wildly, wildly vary, um, throughout the area, so, yeah, until they specifically went below the areas. We knew it was bad, but even on those two, from one end of the building to the other, not great. But they are different, even in that forty feet.
Yes, Rick.
First of all, they're not ducks, they're geese, um.
Well, there could have been a duck hanging out there.
Would it be in our fea- or in our interest to take a look at a different site for the POPS?
I mean, I think we certainly could, um, without having soil borings at the other sites. It's entirely possible those are better, worse, the same, we don't know, correct, Ken?
I would be really worried about Sliding Hill, just being the fact that that whole Sliding Hill area was created from street construction work, if I'm.
And there's wetlands there too.
And the wetlands that are near their pond, whatever.
Yeah, that place was in Memorial Park, correct?
The, I will say the one thing, Rick, if we do change now, um, I would likely see the POPS committee saying, hey. It's where the city wants to go, maybe we wanna cha- we, we can change, but. There's likely going to be added costs for them for maybe having to redesign the facility, but the ci- city be willing to help us out with that redesign, since we've now had to design two facilities.
Yeah, but that might be cheaper than prepping that soil.
Might be. But it's an unknown that you're introducing back into the equation.
No, I know, now I question, because I always thought that on the end of it over there, we could put up like a Phillips Square two. Because that funding mechanism worked out so well.
I, I mean, it, it's entirely possible, when, I think we as a city would want to do more due diligence on that stuff up there, but we do know, as Ken stated. It's not as bad, but there is still potential for poor soils, you know what I mean?
Yes, and elevation issues, you know.
Yeah, you're certainly not putting a eighteen-story high-rise over there. Maybe one or two stories, but again, without soils and the analysis, we wouldn't know that either.
Well, how much, you know, you gotta look at how much soil's gotta be brought in to change the elevations too. And right over in that area, I mean, when you went to do Phillips Square, you had, um, um, high water content. Um, same with Praha.
Yeah, and I should note too, um, they were hitting water. Um, I don't know if it was on these two, but, um, they were hitting water on some of the other borings randomly around. The entire site as well, um, even if you moved it, so.
So those pylon footings, you're probably gonna have to go down to.
Yeah, well, actually this one too, they noted, um, water was not observed in bor- boring number two. Um. And then they did hit water on boring number, or boring number one at seven and a half feet. So again, that's forty feet away. You just don't, you don't know.
The earth's crust is nineteen, about on average nineteen miles deep. I think we'll, don't have to go that deep, but.
So what's the recommendation of staff?
So at this point, within, and this is one I've certainly wrestled with, I think the recommendation would be to deny the request. And I don't know if it would be to deny the entire request, or if we promise up to a point. The thing that I struggle with. Um, is that we do have a piece of city property over here that, um. We are providing at no cost. And while certainly we don't charge for other parks. I think generally there is a cost with almost any park that is built, generally parks that are built. If Ken Andage Great Development decides to build some houses and we as a park from, want apart from them. They must take some of those buildable lots out of their development to then build a park, creating a cost for that land that they have purchased. The city also has committed feasibility, um, study numbers, as well as a small area plan to try to. Put into that exactly where we would want this facility, um. And then ultimately trying to accommodate the other stuff on the site. And then as I, as mentioned in the memo, we ultimately as a city would be looking at accepting and maintaining this. Particular facility in perpetuity, creating a financial cost right there. I think the big struggle I came with this though, is that. Um, the city council has recommended this site that we would want the certain facility if it was going to get built. Um. And I think there is some aspect of if we're going to select the site, would it, should we provide a site that's more buildable? Or just a site that's prettier? Um, I know initially, there was always talk of, well, what could we do with that over there? I do think as we've worked through this whole process, I've come to the realization that. While economic development across that entire two-block region would be great. The middle of it is probably not ripe for much more than grass, storm ponds, and or. Minor, we'll call pocket park facilities near the downtown. So, this, the request from the foundation was, I believe, to cover the entirety costs of. Making that soil corrections and or whatever corrections need to be made, and. Recommending denial, like I said, I don't know if I can re- recommend denial for the entirety. I, I, I can recommend denial for the entirety of the cost to bring that up to par. I could certainly get on board with a lesser amount, um, than that. Um, but I would say, at this point, I don't know where that money would come from.
Is this gonna be considered park property?
I think that becomes another question, um, generally facilities such as this are found in parks, and if we do a larger build-out. A s- small park could be built here, that kind of serves this neighborhood, because we don't have one, I mean, I guess we do have, uh. I'm blanking on it over there on the corner of twenty-one.
Phillips Park.
Phillips Park. We, it's kind of a small walkway park, but this would be a larger piece of grass per se.
Could we bring this in front of the park board and the potential of using park board funds?
I believe it would be eligible, um, and I know we talked about that at park board, I know. Chair Barton from the park board was apprehensive about that. Uh, we have roughly. I think it was a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty, I don't know, Robin could pull it up quickly, but I think in that ballpark of like one fifty. In our park equipment fund, that certainly would, would in my mind be, uh, under the, the legal authority to use. That dedicated money for that. Now, does that necessarily mean that the park board's gonna all agree that? That was the case, but ultimately they're recommending body and the council holds purse strings on that, um, so. That's my take on it.
I think it would be worth a discussion with the park board. Um, because ultimately the recommendation to use that piece of property. Um, and then send it to council for approval came from the park board. Um, so if there is some funds, it might not be a hundred percent, but you know, something. That they would be willing to give, then, um, we could bring that forth to the council.
So, i- if that's the direction the council wants to go, um, I guess, would the city council. Like me to see, I mean, it would be one of those things where we're looking and we're moving stuff around and seeing what's available here or there. And if the park board has park funds that they want to put in a certain percentage, does the city council want me to look? In, in that short term, while we wait to see if there's numbers that I can find from a city council perspective to try to make up that gap? Or is that not something the city council wants me to spend time doing?
My opinion is that whatever the park board may or may not approve. That that's what we bring forth to city council and we don't necessarily add to that from other city funds.
Would agree.
Yeah, I totally agree.
With that said, Maggie, I think I talked at the last park board meeting, I attended, um, that I have. In my minds, in parks' minds, some future goals for some other parks, that we talked about maybe bringing to twenty-twenty-six park, uh. Budget about maybe having the park board see if they'd be interested in funding some of these other projects, um, so maybe I'll work with Ken at that time, so. We have it all laid out on the table, like, hey, is this where we want this money to go, or some of these ideas that I have, I guess, uh. Maybe that would be better fitted for that fund, so I just wanna put that out there, I think that would probably be the appropriate time to do that instead of a couple of months from now.
Yeah, yeah, we get a big picture, that would be great.
I think, Dan, that that's part of the park plan that we're working on, um, that we've been talking about, doing the survey at the park board. Um, to make sure that we have that working plan to know, okay, we've got X amount of money and here's the money coming in. Can we get everything accomplished that we want to? And right now, because the comp plan ran its full life cycle and we kind of. Ran out of projects, as it were, um, I think that. The, the timing's maybe a little ahead of that, but. Obviously, that is a source of money that could be used for that. I just wanna make that clear, that it is statutorily money that we can use for that.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay.
So I guess at this point, I, I would recommend if that's kind of the direction that the council wants to go, that. Um, you guys basically make a motion to send this request back to the park board.
Okay.
Do you wanna do that?
Yeah, I'll do that. I will make a motion to send the request for the POPS Land Improvement Funds. Request back to the park board to discuss, uh, the potential for funding. Based on the overall big picture of other projects that potentially could come, uh, under the park board venue.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Maggie, seconded by Rick. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I, he, he abstained before, I think we can just assume that he's continuing to abstain through the item.
He's abstained. Okay.
I got one more thing to ask about this. Um, why do we have a front-end loader going up and down that, after we just did all that? We didn't do perk tests and stuff, but there's a front-end loader working that, that property today. It's not you?
I have no idea what you're talking about, so I don't think the, either loaders left the shop today.
Well, there was, there was a very large front-end loader, probably one of the biggest ones. Um, over there moving some stuff around and working the grading on the road.
I can look into that.
Yeah, you might wanna bring Tim with you.
Okay. Um. Shoot him.
No, it's probably that guy in the corner.
ARPA funding.
Uh, yes, I know, um, it's been, it was brought up, I think, a couple of meetings ago, just kind of a, hey, where did we land with the ARPA spending? Um, as I'd mentioned at that time, um, under, uh, federal regulations for the ARPA spending, we had to have. The totality of it spent and accounted for, um, by the end of twenty-twenty-four. And so the general summary that I included in the packet, that is very slowly loading for me, so I can't see it, um, does include. Kind of the revenues that we brought in, um, on a year-by-year basis, and then. The year-by-year basis of the spending, as you can see, most of our spending was in twenty-three and twenty-four, and then on page. And then on page two, it broke down how that spending was allocated. As we discussed kind of throughout the process, that spending was directed, um, tried to be directed towards, uh, spending that would not create tails, as Robin likes to call them, or reoccurring expenses over the years, on stuff that we had not already planned spending on. So I certainly stand for any questions, but this is just kind of a summary that we, uh, have shared with the auditors. And we'll keep on file at this point, should the federal government ever ask us to report on how that money was spent.
Okay, does anybody have any questions in regards to that? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next item, item C.
Uh, yes, part of our visioning for twenty twenty-three, uh, or not twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, whatever year is, um, was to do a compensation plan that, uh, if approved would take effect in twenty twenty-six. And so this would be the RFP in your packet, um, that includes uh, what we'd be looking for, that we would send out to advertise for that. I know that it was, um, expressed kind of during the fall, during the budgeting season, that the city council wanted to make sure that it had a, um, say in the process, um, especially through comparables and whatnot. And so I tried to include in the scope of work, the expectations that the, uh, consultant, if selected, um, would certainly be working with the council, um, throughout the process and not just at the very end. When it comes to the various decisions that need to be made. There, I, I will say, there will probably certainly be things happening in the background unless, um, if we, if we include the council on every single little meeting, it'll take a long time, um, to the point of things taking long times, but I, we'll certainly try to make sure that the larger decisions are brought back to the city councils, that direction can be given, to ensure that you guys have a say in this whole process.
What kind of little things are you talking about? I mean, in a meeting, I mean, we have the scope here in the proposal.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm just kinda curious why there'd be little meetings that you guys.
Well, I mean, so I, I think about the various studies that I've ever, ever been a part of, we're meeting with consultants on an almost weekly basis, kind of of, um, I know as you, as you look through this particular process, it might come down to a, uh, hey, we wanna interview the employees just to see exactly what they're doing through their jobs. Here are the, the ten questions we're gonna ask them. That'd be something staff would look, administration would look through and say, yeah, I think these questions seem to make sense. Personally, that feels like a decision that would bog down a city council meeting if we're breaking into even what the ten interview questions are that we're asking each city employee through the process. But I, if that's something the city council wants to see, we can certainly work through that. But at some point too, going through decisions like that feels like the job that we are hired for to work through that process, as you guys then direct um, the larger process from above, if that makes sense.
Right, but it still is, it has the feel that the person doing the study is working for you guys and not us.
And I guess you can certainly.
You're the ones that benefit.
Yeah, you can certainly sit in on every single meeting if you'd like, Sean. I'm just saying the process may take a while then. Um, cause I know your time is just as valuable and we are getting paid to help kind of administer the general policies and directions of the city.
I guess, I don't mind if you had to put a list of ten questions in front of us, but I don't even know why we'd question it if we have this professional that we just awarded this contract to. I don't really see what, if they wanna ask these ten questions, why they have to sit down with you to determine what those ten questions are.
Saying that that's what it is.
I know, that was just an example, but that's what I'm saying this.
But yeah, I mean, I know when we went through the comp plan, we met with them on a weekly basis, if not more. Um, they're doing the same thing with the zoning code now. Um, when we were going through the facility study, uh, I know it would seem like on a weekly basis, they were meeting as they wanted to walk through city facilities, um, get documents from us for different various things. And so through this process, meetings happen on a consistent basis. And that there is, there is a point at which I feel that is our job, after hearing direct from the council, to take that and kind of make that happen and then bring the decisions back to the council to make.
Is this gonna be just the lowest bid or the lowest fee that we're gonna approve or?
Generally through this process that I've always done with these, many times we do end up selecting the lowest one, but it is a kind of reviewing of what they are proposing. And it could be a, the lowest bid comes in, but they're saying it's gonna take them twenty-six weeks and for two thousand extra dollars, the proposal's twelve weeks. And they're gonna give us this, this and this versus this, this and this. And so, um, while many times the lowest bid does get taken, I have seen that they don't get taken if there's justifications as to why you are not taking the lowest bid.
Cause it's RFP.
Correct.
Not a bid, so.
No, but.
Do what you.
Then again, the city staff who this benefits is the one that's hiring the firm.
We are not.
That's where.
We are not hiring the firm. Like, we will go through the interview process and then present you guys with the materials of what we had, and this is why this is our recommendation. But ultimately, city council would be making that decision.
And I've sat on interview processes and there's no, I mean, anybody can sit on them. Listen to their shtick.
Right, well, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a, uh, a city council person that, uh, or a rotating city council person that doesn't sit on
Yeah.
interview boards. Um, I know that Lonsdale does.
Do they?
When they hire for city staff, there's a council, a mayor there. They don't have to have a quorum, but.
And I will say even for interviewing staff, when we've gone department level, we have had generally a city council member sit on that department head level. Staff meeting or interviews, so.
Even the smaller city where I come from had a personnel committee and had one person with the council on it.
Thank you, that's what it is.
Personnel committee.
That was trying to get out, yes. That's a different.
Yep, yeah, so coming back to this, this would just be the RFP to collect those, um, proposals for moving forward with this. We did write in here that, um, I know we tried to collect examples from other cities around us. And many of those timelines just seemed long to us. Admittedly, I've never actually been through a formal comp study myself, so, but we did say that we would like some sort of results so that we can use that in our decision-making process throughout twenty twenty-six, should we choose to. Um, maybe you wouldn't get the final comp study, uh, by September, but some sort of results that you could use if the city council wished to kind of work some of that, if it did, into the twenty-six budget.
One of the things I'm, I was hoping to get, uh, out of this or get more knowledge about is, is when we were asking for a scope of work, that includes review of the philosophy, policy and system, which is really the city council's responsibility to, as part of the monitoring oversight and development of policy. So to me, it would help, be helpful if we had one of the initial meetings being with the city council. And hopefully that this firm would be able to review with us what our philosophy is, what we think about it. And really a better understanding for me anyway is, what do other cities do and what are there other options we have? And do we have to do certain things? Um, my first time around, when I first came on the council is when we did it last. And I didn't have a lot of experience in the public sector, what this was all about. And it seemed like we had to do the stuff they recommended. I didn't realize till the end of it that those, some of that stuff was our choice of the amounts and things like that. And what part of the process is compliance with state and federal regulations and what part of it is, that's, that's our policy or that's our pursuit, that's how we do it. So I would gain some benefit out of the initial meeting, uh, being with the city council to review the overall
Scope?
Some philosophy and policy and what are our options, what are other cities doing? Are we an outlier with eleven steps or, or I know other ones have five and other ones do a, I see, I, I know of other cities that do things differently and I just like, they haven't been understanding what the options are and why do one city does, does it this way and their number system is different and and part of that. So that's one of the things I guess I would like to see. The other questions I have on this include, um, a job, job evaluation system. I didn't realize, realize we have a concern with our, our current method. Do we have a concern?
And I don't know if we necessarily have a concern with our current method, but I'm always open to hearing if we could be doing something better. And it may, they may look at ours and say, I, I think you guys are certainly doing just fine here. I could also see if for some reason they came back and the city council decided to move to a, a different system of how we scale and step employees into something different. We may need a different evaluation system that, um, more closely addresses that. And so I know it's been mentioned here and, uh, I know they used to, I don't know if they still do. Scott County does a little bit different in terms of how they do steps and whatnot, but.
Yeah, it's pay for performance.
Yeah, so I mean, if we did a pay for performance, we would likely need to rehash our current evaluation system. Not that we don't try to track performance and set goals and that sort of thing. But when you're attaching someone's very specific pay to, are you getting a two percent increase or a two point five percent increase? If that's how that system works, I'm not sure how it is. I, I would just wanna make sure that our system would be able to hold up under that particular scrutiny, if that makes sense.
And I'm just trying to understand, looking at the RFP or RF whatever, when you say recommend a job evaluation system, seems to me that we're not happy with what we got. Would you recommend a different one for us? Versus what I'm hearing you say is, what do you think of ours?
Yeah.
Kind of thing. And would we get a better bid if we did, if we just had, what do you think of ours versus recommend one?
And, and maybe, ad- admittedly, when we put this together, like, we did pull language from a lot of different scopes, trying to find stuff that, hey, yeah, th- this seems like it would fit in here and whatnot. And so, um.
And I don't have enough experience with this to know if, if that affects the bidding. Are they thinking, oh, there's more, more work here than I thought, so we better bid it this way.
Yeah.
You know, they're asking us to look at the whole thing. That's, that's gonna be bid differently than, um, we've done this before, guys. We wanna do it again. What do you wanna bid for it?
Yeah.
Questions.
Yeah, but then you get into.
I, I'm, it brought a smile to my face when I read this project background. I'm not sure who came up with that, but New Prague, Minnesota is a safe community.
That was, uh, that was your very own Robin Pickle?
That's very cute. I think the next sentence, I think we're wanting to say located on the border of Scotland, or maybe?
Located on the board.
It says.
Yeah, we, we, we can, well, that's, well, well, we put a board out there.
Border.
Yes, but we're picking on your typos now.
So what do you want here? Do you want approval for, to, to go ahead with the RFP, just to see?
Correct, yeah, that you guys are generally good with what you see here as we move forward. Um, and I guess the next step then would be, uh, once we get to that point of having them all collected, moving from there. Um, and if the city council would like a rep certainly to sit in on the interview process, yeah, we can certainly do that. But the first step is just getting that RFP out.
Um, the last question I have is, I, I know that you have in the completion, um, proposal for changes to two thousand twenty-six budget. And I'm not necessarily opposed to saying that we're not gonna do changes for the two thousand twenty-six budget, but I'm not sure if we have to limit or constrict ourselves to that.
So my only thought with that was if the city council, if there's any changes and the city council decides they want to make changes, those come in March. Suddenly we have potentially unbudgeted changes. Or I guess we just sit on those changes until twenty twenty-seven. And so, um, that, that's why I put that twenty-six budget in there, that if changes would be made, it'd be nice to have them so we can incorporate them in the twenty-six budget in some fashion. And that's where I mentioned, maybe we don't have the study fully completed by the time that happens, but we have some sort of preliminary findings that, hey, we see this potential change coming forward while we can't give you an exact A B C. We know that it might cost roughly this, if this is the direction you wanna move.
Well, I guess a couple of things. I, I, I don't want the process to be hurried. And I don't wanna run into findings in October. You know, if we get them in August or end of July, because you guys start working on the budgets already in July and August. And then you first get it to us in August or September, you know, I, I don't.
Well, I guess admittedly, some of this, this comes to, to the point of, um, the conversation we're having earlier about the speed of government and part of me wants to light a little fire so they don't just sit on it. And, oh, we got time. This is gonna be a, a eight-month project when it could be a four-month project too. So we can certainly change that project completion, I guess, if you guys wanna change the wording in there. Um, but yeah, our, our thoughts were we wanted to keep the process moving and not just sit on it for the sake of sitting on it.
Then, then they have no idea how our budget, or they may or may not know what our budget is, then maybe why don't you just put a hard date on it? Instead of say budget.
Well, and that's what, and yeah, it's cause I didn't know, I think getting something in September is different than getting it in November, when you're trying to work it into the budget cycle. But getting preliminary findings in September are, if it, like, I don't, I, I don't, I wouldn't see us getting a final findings in September. That just feels like it could be too fast. Maybe it's not.
It'd be too fast, September first?
I, well, I say too fast until they, they say, well, there's no way we could even complete this, so I'm not gonna, like, I can't get done by September. I don't know. Now, having never done this process, but maybe they could do preliminary findings. And so, like, I, I hate to put that drop dead deadline in there, cause even when we've gone through other processes, the comp plan says it'll take nine months. It ends up taking eighteen. Facility study, I think their original deadline on us was like fifteen weeks and that drug out for quite a while.
So, so when they ask you, when, when, what does it mean, timely manner to incorporate in the two thousand twenty-six budget? What day is that? What, what's your answer?
Right.
And I, 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 I think we, I could honestly say we don't, we don't know exactly what that means. But hopefully some sort of preliminary, and maybe, maybe we put in there preliminary findings by September so that we can incorporate it, incorporate that in there. Um, should the city council want to move in that direction, I.
I mean, if you get findings in September, I think it's too late because then we won't even see them until so earliest mid-September.
Yep, so I mean, I will say, we are actually probably gonna start working internally on the budget within the next few weeks. Like, it just feels like we put it down and we're already picking it back up again. And, but there, if you remember it, there are certainly a lot of assumptions that we build into that first couple of meetings. Like, I think we assumed that health insurance would go up as much or dental insurance, that this would be there, and then numbers were adjusted accordingly. And so again, having been the first ki- first time kind of through this process officially myself, not knowing what timelines looked like, we were trying to shoot for something here. But if the city council's comfortable with potentially not getting findings until March of twenty-six and then trying to figure out where we go from there, like, maybe that's, that's what we do. But I know that's, that's kind of what I was trying to avoid is getting our findings in early March and then having to adjust for something that was not budgeted for, unless we're gonna hold the findings. Cause I believe the last one, if I remember right, was wrapped up in March. And I don't know if that was budgeted for in the twenty twenty-one budget, or if the city just kind of ate it that year and adjusted accordingly in twenty-two.
That I don't know.
I don't know, but, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went through the process that time, there was a spirited discussion over months.
Mm-hmm, it was.
Yeah, it just didn't.
It's not something that.
I don't think's gonna.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly.
I just.
Move, move, we, we can certainly move that project completion farther out to make sure that, cause I agree, like, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right and take the time to do it. So, yeah, I mean, we, we, we can certainly play with that.
Is this including, uh, and I appreciate you mentioning, um, I think you said something about benefits. Is it including comparative, um, survey, including, um, benefits and things?
Uh, I believe I had that in there. The intent was to have that in there. To include benefits, um, to make sure that people are, the job descriptions people are doing are actually jobs they're doing. While I think most people are close, I wanna make sure that turns out Robin Pickle isn't actually providing janitorial services for us when that's not in, not in her job description.
Sorry, I, I meant.
So, so no, no.
Life insurance, health insurance.
Yeah, so when you say benefits, my intention was to have benefits and I'll certainly read through it again. I thought, thought we had something in there.
Compensation.
It, it is a true full compensation, front to back, not just dollar amount.
Okay, and then, I think we're asking them to do a survey again like it was last time. If we have a meeting with city council in the beginning, I would like to have that as part of our discussion. What kind of comp cities are we choosing?
I, I would fully agree, um, ju- just so that everybody's on the same page. Cause I know that a lot of times they may try to select comparable cities and yeah, Worthington, Minnesota is comparable in size, but do we really wanna bring ourselves to Worthington, Minnesota? Select comparable cities and, yeah, Worthington, Minnesota is comparable in size, but do we really wanna compare ourselves to Worthington, Minnesota? So, um, no, I would agree, like, and that is certainly a conversation I'd want the city council in on, so that way. We have that discussion out right away, and we kinda know the basis that all of this is taking place on.
It's just in our relation to some of the larger suburbs and Minneapolis and St. Paul, I mean, we're very close, so. What does that look like versus, you know, Fairmont, Minnesota in.
Yeah, say, we're we're not, we're not necessarily competing with Bemidji, Minnesota for employees, so should we compare ourselves?
Okay, so does somebody wan- wanna offer a motion to have staff go out for RFPs on the compensation study?
We will, I guess, from what I've heard, if we wanna move forward with this, amending it, kind of reworking that. Uh, project completion language to make sure it's, we've got some more time to make sure it's done correctly. And I will run through it real quick to make sure that that uh, benefit language is in there for full compensation. Before it gets sent out, are those the two changes that council seems to wanna make to this at this point?
Do we wanna wait and to s- to see those changes before we make a motion to approve? Or not?
I don't have any, I I trust him to make those changes.
Okay, I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm fine, and we.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the um, compensation study, RFP. Based on discussion tonight of the uh, amendments to the RFP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce seconds it, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries, request to expand golf board membership.
Uh, yes, golf board president reached out to me a couple months ago, um, kind of floating this idea, and I said. Basically, along the idea of, I know they had talked about, and I think we included it in their bylaws. Of um, having up to two non-members or two non-city residents be members. Um, if approved by the city council, um, if they were members of the golf board and various other stuff. Very similar to our E D A allowing two non-citizens on the E D A, if the city council felt that they had a strong business presence or would be. Um, a um, asset to that board. Along those lines, I know that the golf board, they like their current makeup, and they don't necessarily want to reduce. Or have anyone off of their current makeup to include those up to two additional members, so that's part of this request. The other part of this request is especially over the last few months, they've struggled to have a quorum. Um, they did not have a quorum for their January meeting, and they did not have a quorum for their February meeting, they were able to have a quorum for the March meeting. Um, and more kind of what they've stated, by having those extra, two extra members, they would hope that they would be able to have enough. Members to actually pull a consistent quorum. Along those lines, I did kind of express to di- board president that. I don't know if I'd be recommending approval on this, sometimes it feels like you're adding to add, and that's not necessarily getting you the benefits you think. You're gonna have, um, but I certainly said if this is the board's wishes, that they should pass out a resolution, and I would bring it to the city council then. Um, for their discussion, and so that is what uh, the. Email in here included was the resolution that they passed, um, requesting an increase um, by two. For their board.
So to what end, just so they get a quorum, or they get different input, I mean, what?
I I mean, I think, I think it's kind, it's kind, it's kind of a combination of both of them.
So they think by adding more people, they're gonna get a quorum?
I I I.
That doesn't, I mean, these people are, should be committed to the board, and they should be showing up for their meetings. You know, and if you're just gonna throw more people at it.
Adding more people means you have to have more people show up.
Yeah.
Certainly, so.
I feel the same way Maggie does, and then my vote will be no.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Me neither.
They're not, they're not stating a reason, they're just wanting to throw people at it.
I guess.
Well, well, and like I said, the other reason being that they like their current makeup of who's on it, and. They would also like the ability to add those two that we discussed.
But if they they like their current makeup, why aren't those people showing up? How can they like it if they don't show up to meet?
Yeah, the discussion should be maybe that it's on the wrong day, or the wrong ti- you know, the wrong week or.
Yeah, can we put it on a different?
Right.
Absolutely, before just adding people. You know, I I guess I look at Ken knows if he has a quorum typically for planning.
Because you have to call and verify.
Okay, but you do do, you do that, and um.
Yeah.
I don't know what you do, but um, you know, I think. Bruce, I was.
Most of my commissioners just let me know ahead of time.
Yeah. Or just, yeah.
Well, even in your minutes, you only had three the last meeting you had.
Yeah.
There's only three of you there.
And that's, that's enough, but.
I've never had to cancel a meeting because of not having a quorum, and but, yeah, normally, I think it's just the respect of the members that.
To call.
To call.
Yeah, absolutely.
How long's that golf course been there, a hundred and fifty years?
No.
Under the city's purview directly, because it used to be run as uh, not under the city, I'd probably say twenty years, twenty five years.
Under the city's purview?
Yeah, I was on the golf board when we brought it into the city. City didn't have direct control, right?
Oh, when the charter got changed, yeah, yeah.
So we've only had a board sitting on there for the last?
No, it's been.
Man, it, so I guess at this point, since they've made a, this this request that the city council, I guess, have a motion. Um, one way or the other to respond to the request.
I make a motion to um, deny the request to add board members.
Second.
Maggie made a motion, seconded by Rick, and the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So I just wanna make sure I'm clear on that then, so when we uh, changed it to allow non-residents, we didn't change the the number of.
Correct, it it that's dated seven, it would just be come the process in May, where we kinda go through that interview process. If there are non-residents or members of the golf club that would like to apply, they can, and they'd be vetted like anybody else. There can just be no more than two of those at any given time on the golf board, that way, the city always has majority control.
Right, I think we've had a couple go around since that change has been made.
I think we've had two round, yes, and we've had no applications at this.
No applications from non-residents.
Correct.
All right, the final item on the agenda before we do miscellaneous is update on backyard chickens.
Yeah, so I'll just give you a real brief update on that, uh, the planning commission did discuss kind of a concept, um, information review. At the meeting in March twenty sixth, we had uh, provided background on the discussion back in twenty sixteen, when the council moved to ultimately ban. Um, farm animals outright in any fashion, um. The planning commission back in twenty sixteen actually did make a a recommendation of the council, and had drafted an ordinance that would have allowed them. Uh, but the council did not approve that, so we just went over pros and cons, um, uh, we had uh, did open a public hearing. Uh, we had one resident, Mr. Paulson, that's in the audience here today, uh, provide um, some comment on that. Um, ultimately, a motion was suggested by the planning commission, and it failed on a two to two vote. Um, and that would have been to hold a public hearing at the April planning commission meeting with a draft ordinance, but. It didn't pass, so, um, based on that vote, staff was not planning to continue to work on the matter unless. The council feels otherwise, you can direct things back to the planning commission. So before we put any more effort in it, I wanted to give you an update and kinda get the feeling from the the council, what? If anything, should we do with the topic of backyard chickens?
What was the largest or the most, the biggest concern, I should say, of the planning commission?
Um, I would say even among those that, uh, the, one of the planning commission members that made the motion to hold the hearing was. I'm not necessarily in favor, but I'd like to hear what the public has to say.
Yeah.
And I think the other two, and Sean, I don't wanna speak for you, but um, it was, I think generally didn't feel that they were appropriate in town.
Well, i- that might, I'd, I haven't heard from very many people, I've gotten a few emails. Uh, in in favor for it, I haven't heard of anyone opposed to it, I've even asked people. Uh, you know, when I'm out walking and, you know, what do you think about it, and um, I haven't gotten many negative. Comments, I personally would like to get more public input, um, you know, this. It it seems like a small issue, but it's, I think, an emotional, more of an emotional issue for a lot of people of. You know, I want my kids to experience this, or I wanna be able to have fresh eggs, or whatever the case may be, so. I would like to hear from a broader pers- perspective of of opinions, rather than, you know. Saying this is how I personally feel about it, um. So that's where I stand, I would like to hear more from the public.
I've certainly heard from more people than you have, I think, uh, that are against it, um. The uh, reason is, is that it's, uh, there's a smell a- attributed to it. There are feathers that get released and float in the air, and if you are twenty feet away from your neighbor's chicken coop, and you're trying to be on your deck. And you're holding a birthday party, the last thing you wanna do is get the wharf of a chicken coop and or. Feathers flying, or hay flying, or whatever might be there, now granted, you can still. End up getting a cottonwood tree thing that you can't do anything about, but um, those were just some of the examples that were brought up to me. My feeling is, is that we were missing somebody at the planning commission, the planning committee, and I won't speak specifically for that person, but my. Guess is, having known him and um, him, uh. Um, some of the other past votes that he has uh, done, that it would have failed three to two, if he would have been there. Uh, at the meeting, um, I'm not against hearing from the general public, I think I've heard from many. Um, but if we were to hold a public hearing, even the two that voted, it's gonna be the four people that want to. That will be here, that want chickens, nobody's gonna take a night out of their their night to fight chickens in town. They're just not.
We don't know that, we don't know that.
Well, no, I'm I'm fine with the public.
And then that's the reason for the public hearing is to let the public. Express their opinion.
I totally.
And we can go from there, it, I don't think it would take a lot of effort for to, for us to to at least listen. Um, before we make a decision, because we're giving them the opportunity, if they're for or against. If you don't show up, I'm sorry, your opinion doesn't get heard, and then based on what we hear, that's what we make our decision, how we make our decision.
Do you want that done at the planning commission meeting, or do you want that done here at council?
I would prefer council.
So I guess of note, I believe there is an automatic planning, a public hearing going into the process at planning commission.
Because it requires a change in the ordinance, we do have to have one at planning commission, you definitely could have one added at council as well.
Well, Maggie could come to the.
I would come to the planning.
Yeah, exactly, she could be in the audience.
Happy to.
Um, yeah, because um, if you wanna hear my, you you should be granted that, but I got the same response from Randy that. Uh, Sean got, so, yeah, let's hear from him.
I got, I got mixed emails also.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Let's just let, I think, I'm just think we just let it play out a little bit.
Okay, so I guess the consensus of the council is that we continue the process, correct?
Yep.
Good.
All right, we're exhausted everything, and I'm exhausted, so, I'm gonna go around the horn, Rick.
I apologize, everybody, about this phone, I figured out how to shut it off, but it figured how to how to turn itself on. Just like it did when you did it, it turns on, turns right back on.
I think they made a movie about this.
They gotta, they gotta, they gotta synchronize that with the watch on Tuesday morning.
Okay.
I'll fix it, I'm so sorry.
Nope, no problem. Bruce.
Um, can you mention this before, or Maggie, the park board doing this park plan survey, and I'm just. Trying to understand a little more background on that, because I'm confused as to, we did a recreational study. And we did the comp plan work, which included the park.
Yeah, so.
Why is this?
Again, the comp plan is, you know, at fifty thousand foot level, the uh, facility study we did was specific to facilities. This is really to just get some more specific information from the public, and then that will help the park board and ultimately the council. Plan out like a C I P for projects.
What are the outcomes you want getting at this survey?
Really to look at each park and what are the proposed improvements that we should be working towards? If, is that a picnic shelter at Sliding Hill Skate Park, is that uh, addition to the skate park, is that adding a splash pad in a park? We we've worked through our old plan to, basically to completion, and we kinda need to re.
And or replacing equipment.
Yes, and replacing equipment as well, which we have in a C I P, but we wanna put that back.
Well, it might be a priority.
Yep, soon, oh, what we're working towards.
And is this gonna be done throughout the whole community, or?
Yeah, we'll put out a community survey, yep, but we're doing it internally, it's not like a, we're not really creating new information, it's just. Gathering input, and then the park board will help slot that in, and obviously submit that to the council for ultimately.
So is it gonna be sent with a billing statement, or or how does someone get engaged with the survey?
Yeah, uh, utility billing, parry social media, we'll do any number of ways to get that out there.
Okay, thank you, that's all I got.
I don't have anything, Sean, no, Maggie, Josh?
Oh, I got a list, I'll go fast though, um. See, no one got that joke?
Come on.
Uh, so just as a heads up, just so that Patrick knows, um. And as a reminder to you guys, we'll be having a special meeting on uh, uh, April twenty first at five P M. Um, Yellow Tree Apartments, who was here last fall, wants to sit down and just have a um, discussion in a less formal setting with no decisions on the table. Um, kind of about their potential future, and if it makes sense here or not, um. Two, uh, an update came today from the mosquito district, I figured I'd pass that on, uh. I I don't live in Scott County, so I've never really participated, they used to pick up tires, if for some reason somebody has tires in New Prague they're trying to get rid of. They're not going to do that this year, um, they're instead setting up drop off points, uh, it's at certain dates, but you should call the district. For times and locations for those. Uh, thirdly, uh, Scott County Housing Trust Fund, um, was established. Back in twenty twenty three with allocations from the state, um. From what I understand, is basically the state is, wants to give money to affordable housing, but wants to leave how that affordable. Housing is dealt with to the county level, and so Scott County through ordinance has created a um. Basically, a trust fund, and then a community advisory committee that would recommend to the county board ultimately how those funds would be spent. Um, they did, they are reaching out to all of the cities to see if uh, there is a council member from each of the cities that would like to sit on that board. Um, to kind of direct how those funds will be spent across the county, uh, they said the, it would meet um, statutorily, at least annually. And any more as needed, um, but uh, don't need an answer directly at this moment, but if any one of you would like to certainly sit on that board. Um, they would like, they would love a member of this New Prague City Council to sit on that board.
Do you know how much is in the fund?
I do not know.
County, is it a meaningful number or material number?
I I truly do not know, have that answer, I learned about this today.
Come up with that answer, and then that way we we'll know, because um.
Okay, yeah, I'll I'll send that out to you.
Yes.
Um, uh, just as a heads up, I know that Dwayne and Rick currently have cell phones, I know Sean asked for one, we are working on it. Um, if Maggie or Bruce would like a city-specific cellphone for answering emails, taking calls, putting a public number out. That um, people can reach you on, let me know. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, I think, I believe we mentioned it briefly at E D A here a couple months ago, as we've been trying to work through it. Over the number of years, um, the city of New Prague has accumulated, uh. Small cities development program funding, and here, right before the end of the year, the state reached out to us and said, hey, you guys have. Five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in small city development program funds that can be used for a very specific purpose. Either you need to come up with a plan of how you're gonna use these or give these back, so we reached out and said, we need to talk to the E D A, and she said, okay, great, take however much time you need. So over the course of the last five months now, we've been trying to figure out how exactly we can use these funds, um. We are closer, I, really, it's HUD we're working through, and HUD has been non-responsive for about four months now, so.
Did you say four years ago?
Four months. Four months.
Oh.
Um, so there there is five hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars in there. We are trying to work through with, uh, deed how exactly that money can be spent. We'll likely be talking to the E D A since most of that money originated with the E D A. But there may be some requests that come to you guys in the near future, some things that have come up of things like public infrastructure. And so, um, if we wanted to dig a pond over in the city center lot, that sounded like it would qualify. Ken, can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, if we want to do soil corrections, it may or may not, so we'll have to ask on that one. But, um, just to get, let you guys know that money's there, but it does have a very specific use. And at some point, if we don't use it, the state's gonna want their money back. So we will work with both the E D A and let you guys know and see if we can advance projects the city would have wanted to do anyway. And somehow figure out how to fit those into the scope of that program. So that is all I got.
Thank you. Robin?
I thought he was kidding about the list, but, all right, I just have one thing. We will be sending the, um, final audit drafts to each of you before the council presentation on the twenty first, so just watch your email for those. We'll review them, um, and then send them off to you guys, um, I'd anticipate this week sometime, so there should be ample time to review.
Okay.
Nothing.
Bruce? Nothing? Okay, I take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Wow, wow. And I, um, I was, uh, they were.